Everyone is here in terms of the board members and staff, and thanks to those who are joining from the public. My name is Laura Capps. I am pleased to call this meeting to order on July 21st, the meeting of the Santa Barbara Board of Education, July 21st, 2020. Welcome, everybody. I am going to, and I want to, this is the official first official meeting of Superintendent Maldonado, although she was part of our well-attended study session last week, but this is the first official board meeting. So with that, I will ask her to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Maldonado.
Thank you, Board President Capps. And we have a flag on Zoom since we are all in different places and spaces today. So please put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Maldonado. So with that, we move to item C3, which is our interpretation. Ms. Rubacalba.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. Good evening. In order to provide language access, we will be providing simultaneous bidirectional interpretation in English and Spanish. If you are bilingual, don't have to click on anything. If you are not bilingual in English and Spanish, you will have to select your language in order to hear the interpretation. If you are on a laptop or desktop, you will see a globe at the bottom right of your screen. Please click on the globe icon that says "Interpretation" and select "English." If you are on an iPad or a similar device, locate the three-dot menu and select "Language Interpretation," then select "English." When it's your turn to speak, please remember to be loud and clear and speak at a moderate pace as the interpreter will be interpreting simultaneously into the other language. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, then we will begin the interpretation. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And with that, I just want to let everybody know that there's about 300 people in attendance here, which again is just such a strong testament to how important these decisions and this discussion is about our schools and our kids and the future with this pandemic. Item C4 is an announcement of closed-session action. There were no actions taken in closed session. So that brings us to Ms. Maldonado's first superintendent's report.
Thank you again, Board President Capps, and good afternoon, board members and public. I just want to give you a little bit about what it's been like for my two weeks, two days, a total of 14 days on the job. I've been able to spend some time getting to know people around the organization, learning a lot about their roles and responsibilities, of course, getting to know this exceptional executive cabinet, administrators, principals, some maintenance staff that's gone around. I see some working on sanitizing schools, a little bit of the grab-and-go, some of our food services, food service workers, and we'll hear a little bit more about that from Ms. Jet later on, some teachers and some other staff. I also got a chance to go see Franklin Elementary School with the amazing principal Casey Kilgore, who was knee-deep in trying to figure out how to, you know, can we bring kids back full-time? And of course, this was way before our Friday announcement by Governor Newsom to stay in remote learning. With that said, we held some principal meetings to think about all the different contingency planning that we can do around the different models and ways that we can deliver instruction. I've met our labor partner, President of Santa Barbara Teachers Union Karen McBride. We've had a couple of conversations. I'm also working with a pastor to create an interfaith leader group to convene on issues of youth and talk about some of the issues that are facing our youth today. So we'll be getting, sending out invites to our interfaith leaders throughout the community. I've had a chance to also meet Margie Yoyavi from the Santa Barbara Education Foundation and began some conversations with her and others from United Way on a potential for community collaborative and meeting some of the needs that we continue to have as a school district. And of course, Board President Capps, and I got a chance to meet with world-renowned Dr. Hazeltine, who's a leading authority on pandemic-related issues and safety and health, who gave us some some of the latest information on COVID-19 and ideas on how to think about when we make these decisions on whether it's not, whether or not it's safe to have children return to school. And really emphasize this idea that we still don't have a lot of information that we need to know around some of the short or long-term effects this virus may have on children. Of course, later on today, in this meeting, you'll hear more about our quick shift from planning a return to school in person to now a remote learning environment. But I want to assure the board that our decisions will continue to be guided by science, facts, concerns for our health and safety, our employees and children, and the ultimate objective of providing a quality education for all our students. So thank you once again. And that's my report. Now with that, oh, sorry, one more thing. I apologize. I also get the honor of introducing you to Mrs. Paige Dupont, our newly-appointed Dean of Student Engagement at San Marcos High School. Mrs. Dupont was a high school English teacher who went on to serve as a dean of students in Anaheim before moving here to Santa Barbara last year. And she has supported the district last year as an interim assistant principal at San Marcos, interim dean at La Cuesta and Alta Vista, filling in for two of our administrators who are in a leave of absence. So please join me in welcoming Mrs. Paige Dupont, dean of student engagement at San Marcos. We'll say a little bit of words of introduction. Thank you. Excellent. Ms. Dupont, I think.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you so much for that introduction, Ms. Maldonado. And it's so nice to actually meet you, you know, and thank you so much to the members of the board for trusting the district leadership team in my new position and in having that faith in me as I serve this community. As Ms. Maldonado said, it's been an interesting year. As a former Gaucho, you know, I think all of our dreams are to either stay here and try to make it work or to come back. And my family chased that dream about a year ago. And we had just, it was a little nerve-wracking for me, I think, trying to find my educational fit in Santa Barbara after resigning from my former position. But as Dr. or Ms. Maldonado mentioned, Dr. Glazer took a big risk on me and allowed me to serve as an interim assistant principal at San Marcos. And I knew that the moment that I stepped foot on that campus that there was something special going on there. And then, and after shutdown, I had that opportunity to really kind of navigate our way through remote learning at La Cuesta and Alta Vista and serve as dean. And I'm just grateful for those opportunities, I think, will really help me bridge some of these gaps in transition as I'm moving over to work at San Marcos. And I'm looking really forward to connecting with those students and engaging them and serving the community of San Marcos. So thank you so much, members of the board, and go Royals.
Go Royals. Welcome, Ms. Dupont. And thank you to Superintendent Maldonado for that report. You certainly have hit the ground running, even in this Zoom environment. And we're all, we're all feeling and all appreciative. So thanks to both. Thanks, Ms. Dupont. Welcome. And with that, we move to, let's see here, oh, for the board. So item six is for board comments and correspondence. Do any of my colleagues on the board wish to speak about any correspondence? There have been quite a bit, or comments you'd like to make up front here. Dr. Reed.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. Yes, I would also like to acknowledge our superintendent, Maldonado, and definitely bringing her expertise and actually really positive energy. I really appreciate that. You just bring this synergistic experience and a willingness and want to communicate with everyone. So and able to quickly assess where we are and where we need to go. So thank you for that and for your work for our district. I also just wanted to take a moment to reach out and thank our community, the families, the teachers, and our students who have reached out to the board to share their concerns, their hopes, and their dreams, desiring to find the answers to very important and challenging questions related to our district reopening. I really appreciated the emails and the perspectives, as well as the ideas and suggestions that many brought forward. And I also wanted to say that I really appreciated the tone of the emails. They were very constructive. They were positive when they, you know, just in, they wanted to do, you know, they were bringing their experiences and their concerns. But there was a positive feeling of wanting to come together and figure this out. And I really feel that that's what we need to do, this willingness to come together, to talk about the issues, to offer ideas and suggestions, and realize that we are here to listen, that we are here to support and to discuss these issues, and that there is nothing that can be done in a vacuum, that it really is about collaboration and co-construction and thinking outside of the box as we see. So I just wanted to share that. And I'll share some of the conversations that I had with parents and teachers with our action agenda, item number one. But I just wanted to express that in this board opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. I saw Ms. Ford's hand up as well.
Well, thank you so much. Let's see. I actually echo those sentiments. But tonight, I also want to report to the board and to Ms. Maldonado about the July 15th meeting of the South Coast Partnership was the quarterly meeting of the Youth Safety Council, especially since we are 100% focused on young people tonight. The meeting was chaired by Mayor Kathy Mario, and there were some very interesting and important report items that I would like to share with you. One is that in many ways regarding youth safety, there is good news, and that in separate reports by the Sheriff's Department, the Probation Department, and also the Police Department, there is less youth crime, significantly less arrests and jailings, less calls regarding juveniles, gang activity, young people in juvenile hall, and young people at the camps. However, there is a caveat, and the caveat was that there's also a decline in reported crimes against children and CPS reports. And this is most likely due to the fact that so many of the mandated reporters, especially in our schools, had very little contact with children other than their own over the past few months. There was also mentioned that because of the few reactive calls and the decline in calls, there were much more, there was much more activity in being proactive and engaging with families that they know experience violence and/or criminal activity. And also, we looked at some data that showed that gang activity has significantly declined over the past 10 years. And finally, the representative from the Police Department told us that they are working hard to repair relationships with the community and engage in innovative ways. It was a really interesting and important meeting. I'd like to just conclude my comments with a quote from John Lewis, who passed over the weekend. He said, "We may not have chosen the time, but the time has chosen us." And so I just hope we all go forward in that spirit tonight and in the coming months, as we try to do what's right for children in creating an educational experience that is rich, rewarding, rigorous, anti-racist, and safe in the face of this dangerous pandemic. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Ms. Mouton.
Good evening, everybody. I too want to echo the comments of my board, sister board members. Just in terms of Mrs. Maldonado, thank you and welcome. Just you've really been working hard behind the scenes. And so it's evident keeping us up to, you know, up to date on things that you're working on out in the community. So I want to appreciate your work and welcome, Ms. Dupont, to the Royals. And I just want to say, the one thing that keeps coming up for me throughout this whole pandemic and, you know, figuring out how we work things is interdependency. And we really are interdependent on each other to make sure that we're safe and we're well as a community. The school is not an island. We truly need this community to help us, you know, open up in a way that, as you know, Ms. Ford said, with regards to making sure our students are there, they're healthy and they're safety, and for their health and their safety. And so we want to make reminder that we really have to work together as a community to make sure that we're successful in the things that we do and that we go forth in a healthy way and that we open our schools and they remain open with regards to that. So and lastly, I just want to say thank you for all the work that everybody's doing, the suggestions that are coming in, and just acknowledging the work of all our school administrators, parents, and everybody trying to just get it right. So if we can, the other thing is being patient with each other as well. So interdependency and patience. So thanks.
You're here. Ms. Munoz.
Thank you. I also want to, you know, echo the comments of my sister board members and know that we're all in this together. Very pleased with, you know, the work and communication with our superintendent, our new superintendent, Hilda Maldonado, and appreciated reading the letters from the community, from everyone, everyone's input, and trying to, you know, take that all in as we go forward. I'm very concerned about, you know, the inclusion of all of our students and with, you know, having equity for our students as we go forward and go from, you know, starting August 18th. I also appreciate all the interest, all the, you know, 397 participants at this point that we have and, you know, and coming up with a strong plan. From now on, the education of our students is paramount, and we want them all to be able to advance and hear all the voices that are coming, you know, to us and just having that positive feedback from everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. And in the spirit of my sister board members, I want to thank also the public for the incredibly constructive correspondence we've been receiving over these every, everyday dozens. And it's, there is, there's a big variety of perspectives, but the common theme, I just want to state upfront, is we all can't wait for our children to be back in school safely. I can't wait as a mom and as a board member here. That's the goal, and that's what we'll be discussing tonight. And one mother wrote in to me, and we were kind of going back and forth. And then she shared about how her mother survived Germany during World War II and wasn't in school for a couple of years, but read, et cetera. Her mom tutored her. And it kind of, it gave me chills as I was reading it, because I'm sure many of you seen, many scholars are comparing this time to World War II. Nothing since then has been so large in its scope. And also, the key here is there's no end in sight. And that fills us all in our own ways with such anxiety. And so when I read the emails and I talk to parents, I feel that, I share that with you all, the death toll, and just the fact that we're sort of, in a sense, moving sideways. We're not moving forward. We're moving sideways through time with this not knowing when it's going to end. And that's very challenging. And so as much as there's differences of opinion on approach, the commonality is we can't, we all want our children to be educated in person in our beautiful schools that we all have so much pride about. So that's the spirit that I take. And I want to thank that parent for her sharing her story of her mother surviving World War II and coming to America and fitting right in into our wonderful public school system. So with that, thanks to our board members for sharing correspondence. And we will move into the next agenda item, which is the public comment. We have public comment, these are on non-agenda matters. So this will be on issues non-related. Yes, there are still many to reopening of schools. And so, Mr. Heo, if you could take it away and invite our public to speak on item C7, which is not, non-agenda matters within jurisdiction of the Board of Education. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, President Capps, members of the board. We have 19 speakers for this item. I will mention the first five names so people can start getting ready and then meeting themselves. So I will start with Roseanne Crawford, Sabina Said, Christian Alonso, Justina Bueller, Christina Silvers. And I will start with Roseanne. I was thinking.
There, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent and Board, the governor and the teachers' union has put us into checkmate for the moment with opening schools. This decision, taken out of your hands, will hinge on how soon we're off the monitoring list. Virtual only is only a temporary solution, having many damaging effects on students and families. I hope there is a collaboration with the Goleta District, who already had strike teams on the ground weeks ago, taking measurements and planning for onsite back-to-school. Please focus on developing a hybrid model so we can move efficiently when our metrics meet the public department standards. The state has released extensive guidelines for opening schools that meet compliance. I would want to see incorporated in planning options for opt-out for families and teachers that want to remain in virtual, in the virtual platform to be reassessed at the end of fall. There will be plenty of teachers anxious to get back on the ground. And for those that don't, the hybrid model requires significant virtual support, not to mention the extra virtual support that will be needed with those falling back academically, particularly the English learners. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Sabina Said.
May I share the screen, or is it, I can only talk?
No, you may only speak to the board.
Okay.
You can go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'm asking to speak because I would like to propose that the Santa Barbara Unified School District apply for variance from Governor Newsom. So Santa Barbara schools can use the hybrid plan that they developed for our schools. Why? I believe the safe schools must be based on local health data. An area from Galloia to Ventura County meets all the California metrics for safe learning. And this area has met all the California metrics for safe learning since July 1st. Our California's hospitals that are located in both the North and South County do meet the hospitalization criteria. In fact, there is a surplus of beds. While the South County is stayed below 30 number beds, and the North County, together with the South County, have approximately 80 beds in use, will both meet the criteria. In fact, we have a surplus of beds. We are importing people from Los Angeles and even Imperial County. The South County also meets the case rate since July 1st. We have stayed around 30 cases per day. Today, I believe it was 25.
Hi. Thank you.
The South County meets the positivity rate since July 1st also. Whole County, it's true. It's only below.
Sorry. Next, we have Christian Alonso. Christian, can you hear us?
I can. Thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Christian Alonso. I'm the president of the Santa Barbara Young Democrats. Thank you so much for your time. Undoubtedly, you'll all hear tonight from a group of white supremacists who consistently show up to these meetings, Goleta Unified and at City College, and they call themselves Fair Education SB. They say horrible racist things. They dog whistle. They file crazy lawsuits against our schools, and they target and harass our board members and staff. They also circulate racist memos about how the school district's commitment to racial equity makes their white children feel bad about themselves, advocate against common sense sex education, and are running for the Goleta Unified School District on a platform of making our diverse schools teach in English only, among other racist and unsavory things. We're happy to see Fair Education SB lose their stupid and frivolous lawsuits, and we expect to see them lose more. We won't allow any of them to be elected to the school board, and we won't tolerate their racist and harmful rhetoric in our schools and at these meetings. I would just like to reiterate my call to all the folks listening in that we all commit to keep showing up, to drown out the white supremacist's voices in our community. Show these board members that you'll have their back here in this space and at the ballot boxes. We work together to dismantle white supremacy in education. To conclude, I would just love to hear more of the board members' thoughts on how we can rapidly shift resources to support our teachers with the virtual lesson plans and keep our students fed, keep them active, and ensure that we close gaps for students who don't have access to high-speed internet and virtual learning technology. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Justina Bueller. Hi, Justina.
Can you hear? Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi. Thank you for your time tonight. I want to thank Superintendent Maldonado for her recent statements around committing to equity in our school district, especially as we're shifting to this online environment. I know there's been pushback from some community members who are worried that white students might be marginalized by equity efforts. But I encourage the school board to continue to look at the evidence that shows that there is improved performance for all students when teachers use equity-based practices in their classrooms. I am myself an educator, and the institution I teach at here in Santa Barbara has provided me with equity training, and this has dramatically improved my effectiveness as a teacher. For example, when I include practices from culturally responsive pedagogy, student scores across all demographics improved on a research project. And we all know that research papers are one of the hardest assignments to get through in classes. So I was really impressed by that direct measurable effect that using equity-minded practices in the classroom had for me and how it improved scores for all my students. I'm someone who grew up with access to good education, and clearly, as an educator, I saw the wonders of learning. And I support all the efforts that the board is making to ensure that this kind of experience can happen for all students. Thank you, Superintendent Maldonado, and welcome to Santa Barbara.
Thank you. Next, we have Christina Silvers. Christina, can you, can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you, Superintendent Maldonado, for your efforts to improve remote learning and support services for all students this fall. I especially appreciate the fact that you recognize how existing disparities have been amplified by coronavirus and remote learning. Your understanding of this dynamic, your willingness to name it, and your commitment to minimizing it exemplify the kind of clear leadership we need. An indispensable component of this work is teacher training on practices that are both equitable online and culturally inclusive. Research shows these practices, when done well, benefit students of all ethnicities and abilities, not just those traditionally hurt by societal imbalances. As a white mom in the district, I support the idea of my children having a diverse education that considers a multitude of perspectives so they can make sense of this country, of the world, and their place in it. And it's just so much more interesting as well. So I do not worry, as I've heard some do, that quality programs to meet the needs of students being left behind will somehow automatically harm children like mine. There just is no evidence of that. I am concerned, however, that parents who may not have taken the time to educate themselves on these matters are offering their fear-based opinions to obstruct much-needed research-based initiatives to serve all students, including their own children as well as mine. I hope you continue to identify and address gaps in resources, opportunities, and outcomes in our schools. And please keep the conversation and the momentum going. Thank you.
You. Our next five speakers are Dennis Brand, Maggie Light, Lauren Quiddit, Dana Morton, Peggy Wilson. We'll begin Dennis Brand. Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you. I support Superintendent Maldonado's push for programs that will increase equity for students during online instruction. I know that everyone who cares about education wants to make sure we are doing our best to provide it equally to all students. But I want to reiterate the point that increasing equity for students with less access to technology and other advantages will not decrease the value of education for others. When I was a young male undergraduate student, I took several English classes from a couple of amazing middle-aged feminists. Far from making me feel unwelcome, the new perspectives they gave me opened new and exciting ways of approaching the material, which helped encourage me to go on to graduate studies. Everyone who enjoys learning knows the excitement of encountering new ideas and perspectives. And I believe that increasing equity will let more students of every demographic get to experience this joy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maggie Light. Maggie, can you hear us?
Hold on. Now, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, here we go. Maggie Light, Santa Barbara High School teacher. Years ago, I spoke in opposition to something at a public meeting. I was wisely advised to present a possible solution I thought both parties might agree to. To do this meant acknowledging my opposition's point of view and finding common ground. But it also allowed me influence in crafting a solution. Many of the point of views expressed at the June 23rd meeting could learn the same lesson. Loaded language might make it easy to stake a position. It doesn't help solve problems. The connections between equity, social justice, and the academic divide are complex and take time to understand. My experience with IEE through just communities was transformative My experience with IEE through Just Communities was transformative and remains so. Yet I still struggle with hard to grapple questions. We need to do a better job of educating ourselves as a community. About these issues instead of using them as political wedges to divide. Rather than to increase community commitment to education. Commitment is hard. But these regular areas airing of grievances at these board meetings reflects poorly on our collective commitment to education. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Lauren Quident. Lauren.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening Superintendent Maleno and members of the board. As a parent and former student in this district, I moved not only advocate for my own white children. Our community. I want my appreciation and support to all of you. For your continued commitment to working towards equitable education practices, especially during this pandemic. I urge you to continue in this pursuit. As we know, research shows that online learning will disproportionately impact our most marginalized students. We also must prioritize training our teachers on equitable education practices. Both for online or in person teaching, knowing this knowledge will help all students. Regardless of their race, abilities or other needs. Thank you all.
And if I can just jump in because there's a little confusion. Some people are speaking in public comment now, which is fine. To an agenda item that's coming up, which is about. Remote learning and the future here. And so I'm. Receiving a text or two from those who are coming, that's coming next. So just want to, everyone's fine in their place where it is, but. This is technically for things unrelated to remote learning, but we're, we'll stick with who we have in the lineup. Just wanted to give that explanation.
Okay. Next we have Dana Morton.
Hi, my comment was on remote learning, but since my name was called, I'll, I'll read it now. So I wanted to express my support for the superintendent and the board's leadership and the efforts of the board to increase equity and support. Of our most marginalized students. I really appreciate and echo. The superintendent's statements prioritizing the safety of the students and the teachers and ensuring that 100% of the students will have access to a working device and uninterrupted internet service. It's crucial that the board remember that online learning winds the already existing opportunity gap and disproportionately impacts those most marginalized students. And this occurs because students who thrive in regular classes typically do well in online classes. Whereas students who have trouble in regular classes tend to have even more trouble with online only education. Regardless of their home situation. So we need to stay equity minded throughout this process. This is not a push to return children to in person classes, but rather a reminder that the implementation of online education needs to constantly consider the needs of the most marginalized students, not only those that are thriving. Or at least surviving. In addition, teachers that are trained about equitable online teaching practices will benefit students of all races, abilities and needs. To emphasize this point, research shows that culturally inclusive teaching practices benefit all students, including white students. And I would like to encourage the superintendent to keep equity at the forefront of district discussions. To hold our district accountable to serving all students and to continue leading with an equity mindset. Although there may be a few loud and discouraging voices, there are many more of us that support your approach and efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Peggy Wilson. Peggy, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Thank you. First, I, I just want to call out because I'd like the board to be a little bit more. Just, I don't know, keeping it cool. I had Christian Alonso called people who vary with his opinion, white supremacist, racist. And he says, we're dog whistling. Well, I heard him dog whistle. So if the board could please just stop that. Okay, I want to just say I'm on talking about the education and remote learning, but really want. Some variety in that and hoping that the board will really push. For teaching outside tents, whatever. The, the kids that are going to be hurt the most are really low income kids. There's stress on parents. I know last week or two weeks ago, when the doctor spoke, he didn't really even mention about mental, mental conditions with kids being home and just all locked away. And it's really, it's a huge problem. You can read all about it. I'm sure you guys all know. So I, I would, you know, the, the stats of your own school is proficiency, 54% proficiency in English at grade level. And either it's 43 or 47% proficiency in math at grade level. It's terrible. To keep these kids home is, you know, unconscionable. I really would love to see you guys really think out of the box. I heard you talk about that. You said it's a crime against children. Get the kids some type of a thing where you guys are going to have to pull together under the tent outside. We live in Santa Barbara. It's beautiful.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are Nancy Sheldon, Patricia Fancher, Chris Norden, Jennifer Burquist. And Barbara Badistini. Nancy Sheldon, can you hear us?
Yes, hi, thank you. I'm, I'm the parent of high schoolers at San Marcos. Since as Laura Capps just said, there's no end in sight. I'm asking you to think outside the box. To achieve some of the goals that are not possible in an online learning environment. Just like you were considering classroom cohorts, please allow smaller activity cohorts. They can be smaller, more easily managed and would eliminate the need for policing of rules. If a participant doesn't comply, they can't participate. Students will comply as they'll want to remain part of these groups. With safety measures put in place, students could join their, their sports, mock trial, cheer, ASB, Kings Page Theater and other clubs. Allow each child to pick one activity that they participate in, in person. If there's a case of COVID, the exposure will be limited and easier to manage. This would, kids would be given back the part of the school they enjoyed most, some sense of normalcy. An activity they can count on, responsibility, discipline and structure that online learning reduces. And an opportunity for staff to personally engage with students and assess their social and emotional wellbeing. If you don't have the resources with your focus on online academics, engage a task force of volunteers. With staff oversight at each school to create and execute the plan and define the volunteers to oversee these programs. If you can't offer this to everyone, please at a minimum, consider the seniors. As it looks like they're going to be losing their last year of high school. It's heartbreaking for so many reasons and I challenge you all to do more for our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Patricia Fancher. Patricia, can you hear us?
Hello.
Can you hear me? Yes.
All right, I'm Trish Fancher. I've lived in Santa Barbara for about six years and I teach at UCSB. And I'm just calling in to affirm and thank the board for your leadership for equity. And the work that y'all are doing to ensure that all students are safe from COVID. But also continue to have equitable access to education as we continue to teach and learn remotely. So I've also transitioned to teaching online. It's at UCSB. So my students are just a few years older than some of the high school students. That are at the public education here. And I see these students struggle. I see the students without wifi, without technology. I'm talking to many of my students who report that they're actually taking on childcare duties. Now that their younger siblings aren't in public school, they lack quiet spaces, resources and structures to thrive. I know that the board has abundant research, research that demonstrates that the inequalities that we're seeing under COVID. And as we transition to online are exasperated when we shift to online education, especially for racial minorities and for the lowest income families. We cannot leave these children behind and I applaud you for the work that you're doing to center those who are most vulnerable. So I, I encourage you to keep equity at the forefront of the district's discussions. And also to serve all students as we continue to lead with an equity mindset. And I also just as a note, want to say that. If someone is called a racist or a white supremacist, that can be done actually like in a really neutral term as a discussion of. The impact of their actions and not name calling. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Chris Norden. Chris, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh yeah, I would like to reaffirm and reiterate everything that Christian Alonso said and back up. And I want to put my full throated support behind the board when you resist the actions of fair actions. As the previous speaker spoke, when you accurately call someone a white supremacist, it's not necessarily a value judgment. You are valuing tradition and comfort of, of the way you're used to doing things over controversy and having to learn, which is the entire purpose of education. So that's why it's such a disservice to deny students more equitable access to that. And I've been auditing my wife's Black Studies class lately and I cannot tell you how many of their arguments just echo. Videos from the 50s and 60s where, you know, any, any conflict with tradition. Is inherently going to hurt white children. And these were people in favor of segregationists. So. No matter what, as a board of education, you're going to be accused of indoctrinating children one way or the other. So it's really easy to be. On the right side of history here, when you're choosing between accurately calling someone white supremacist. So just stick with that because obviously you've been going in that direction. If we could hear more full throated rejections of what they stand for, that would really make me feel great. Since it's a pretty easy, easy decision and it would show that we would, you know, what the correct way to go. With, with education is. And I just wanted to say that you will be backed up in the voting booth if you, if you follow up with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Jennifer Burquist. Jennifer, can you hear us?
Hi there.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening to all of you. I'm here in support of Superintendent Maldonado's plans to strive for equity in our district. I'm a parent of a couple sons in their 30s who attended the public schools. I'm a former school teacher. I taught at Franklin Elementary. I was a sub using my Spanish speaking skills. I've worked in the district and in the community as a volunteer. With a number of nonprofits, including Just Communities. Its leader is exemplary. I've served children and families throughout our community for a number of years. And I would say through this work. It is clear to me that all children need to be respected and nurtured in order to succeed in schools and in life beyond. Those who are not respected and those who are not taught to respect others will struggle in this world. Therefore, it's everyone's responsibility to support equity and justice for all children. And our community as a whole. Most recently, I've gotten to know some parents, some parent leaders at Harding Elementary School. And I'm concerned that many of those students do not have access to devices. Which will assist with remote instruction. Certainly, this is an opportunity to do things differently. And it'll take a strong community response to serve the many needs of our children. I'm ready to do my part as a community volunteer. Thank you very much and thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. Next we have Barbara Badistini. Barbara, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
The government shutdown of our government schools is a total disruption in the lives of thousands of children and their parents. Instead of considering a hybrid model to be used to reopen the schools safely, the decision was made for us. This is an ongoing trend of government taking control of our lives and our families. Government seems to want to be the parent. For example, we are fighting to stop sex ed teen talk curriculum selected by Dr. Anne Randy. That does not support or respect our family values. No, we don't want our children learning that anal sex prevents pregnancy. And is offered to them as a choice. No, we don't want the indoctrination of our children of gender theory, theory that contradicts science. And no, we don't want our children to be taught negotiation skills for consent of sex. Why are these six government curriculums offered to us? That are offered to us focus on sexual pleasure, then they direct our children to plant parenthood as young as 12 years old without parents consent. We are well aware that the next thing coming is hormone treatment for our children without the barrier of parent involvement. I challenge all mothers and fathers to take a deeper look into the books your children are reading and the curriculums that are not transparent. Parents should have choice for their children, not the government. We do not want our children to be radicalized for a political or social agenda. Get back to reading, writing and math and put a standard of morality back in our schools.
Thank you. Our next four speakers are Chelsea Lancaster, Dylan Griffith, Monique DeWitt, Linda Bonet. And. Chelsea Lancaster. Can you hear us?
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to call and support. Hilda Maldonado and the entire board in their, in their equity efforts. I really appreciate your leadership in this arena. And wanted to say that if fair education and other parents were so concerned about equity issues. They would get behind initiatives like ethnic studies, which are evidence based and proven to close. Opportunity and access and achievement gaps for marginalized students. I cannot believe that in the middle of civil unrest in a second wave civil rights movement, we're still having dialogues. Which show, like this, which shows how ahistorical so many of these parents that are calling in. This is the argument for equity initiatives for an anti racist education, for an anti oppressive education. As a teen mother, I needed better comprehensive sex education in my school. These are also the parents that are currently using their vast resources to set up pods. To explode the equity gaps that already exist. They have the resources to hire tutors, in home private teachers. And they're privatizing our education system as we speak, advocating for charter schools. So these folks are interested in defunding public education. They're interested in widening the gaps. And they've proven that with all of their rhetoric and actions. Thank you so much for your leadership. Please continue. The community has your back.
Thank you. Next we have Dylan Griffith. Dylan. Not able to find Dylan. I'm going to go with. Monique DeWitt. Monique, can you hear us?
Sandra, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. And welcome, Hilda Maldonado. It's so wonderful to see you here at your first meeting. I do want to talk about something that is extremely important and it is the up and coming three seats of the appointed board members that are up and coming for the election. And I talked to the county election board and found out that if you want to run, you have to have $5,300 or $10,000. And there's so much discussion about equity here. But I find that this is actually not very equitable because I know. I advocate for many people's struggle with literacy and those are the ones most marginalized, have the worst scores. And parents there who are considering even running or having some voice, nobody can afford that. And this makes me really upset that this bar would have been so high. And I asked the office and they said, actually, the district had a choice. And the district chose to pass the fee to the candidates rather than absorb it themselves. And when we can afford a $26.5 million armory and a $40 million football field. I think we would want to pick up the tab for this. So that everybody, no matter how socioeconomically stressed they are, can run. That's a democracy. And as we know with our former superintendent Matioko, he got to hire all of his own bosses. Those five seats were all appointed. And it just doesn't feel like democracy. And in fact, I'm announcing my candidacy. We're going to scrape it together somehow because I just. I, I know people on the west side, San Andreas Street, their kids still can't read and they're told that, you know, it's not their problem. That's in the 11th grader that I now know. And this is just not equitable and he'll hear me. Get rid of those fees. Thank you. Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you. Next we have Liz, younger man. Liz, can you hear us?
Hello.
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Liz and I'm a community member. I've lived in Santa Barbara for about 15 years and I work in education. And I just wanted to say. I really appreciate all your hard work and I really, really hope. You keep up the good work and I really want to say, I think it's so important to have ethnic studies. You know, an ethnic studies class and also have it spread throughout the curriculum. And I know sometimes people are saying having ethnic studies is radical. And it's radicalizing our children. But I would just like to say that if we look back in our history, if we look back in the 50s and 60s. When people advocated to desegregate schools, those people were called radicals. And those people were spit on and yelled at. And so I just want to remember that, that I know. Sometimes doing the right thing were called radicals, were, were told that it's wrong. But you know what? The people who fought for desegregation of schools were told that it was wrong. And we need to remember, history is just us then. That's all the differences. So the people who right now are saying ethnic studies is not okay, then they're the people who back then would have been yelling at black children for trying to step on white school grounds. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that, to not forget our history and to remember that even though the Civil Rights Act passed in the 60s, we still have a lot of work to do. And I just want to say that I appreciate you guys continuing to do the work. And as a community member, I'm going to try to do my work. I'm going to try to show up and support you all.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next, we have Linda Bonet. Linda, can you hear us?
I can. I just, let's see. Am I on there? Okay, great. Good evening, school board and Superintendent Maldonado. Tonight, I would like to address the parents on this line. Because the state and school district have closed in classroom teaching, parents have been forced to look at other options. This spring proved to be a big failure for many parents and kids that didn't do well online. There are multiple homeschooling and co-op options being considered. For many of us who have fought the curriculum for a long time, it's a real blessing. The parents can choose a curriculum. They can teach their children true American history, the basics in math, English and science, how to be productive citizens and prepare them for the future, jobs, possible careers, and education. This is not happening at our Santa Barbara government schools. Parents, did you know? Just communities have targeted our white students to be ashamed of their race and heritage. If you happen to be a Hispanic student, you're taught to be a victim and oppressed. This is pure racism. I didn't call anybody a racist. I said, this curriculum is racism. They are bringing back Jim Crow to this generation. Please research what Jim Crow was. Parents, did you know teen talk is a sex education curriculum they're considering teaching your children? We have done much research and found it is pornographic as it grooms and sexualizes your children at a very young age. It confuses kids on what gender they are, they are biologically. Many parents are choosing to teach their children. This is a silver lining for parents that will benefit their children this semester. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. President Caps, and that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Hugh, and thank you to our speakers. I am going to move us then to the consent agenda, item D. Do any board members wish to pull any consent items from the agenda for discussion? Okay, we have at least two here. So Ms. Simms-Moten.
Yes, thank you, President Caps. I, I just have a question with regards to our facilities. Understanding some of the crisis, the COVID crisis has limited our construction and to go forth. And so I don't know if Mr. Vizelini is on the, on the screen tonight. So I would want to know what delays that COVID-19 has caused us? And will that, will those delays then increase the cost of those projects?
I'm not sure if he is a panelist here, but if any cabinet member wants to take that or potentially bring him in to the panelist. Oh, good. Mr. Vizelini, you're on the spot. Here you go.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Maldonado, welcome to your first official meeting. Ms. Sims-Moten, the answer to your question is, we really haven't seen a delay in construction at all since the construction industry has been considered essential all along. They've been moving. So we've got projects that are finishing up. We've got other projects that are getting ready to start. And we're continuing to work as if there's no issue yet. So until we see, receive some direction from the board about slowing down for some reason, I don't, I don't foresee that being an issue yet.
I appreciate that. I just wondering what, you know, COVID, if at any, had any issues with regards to our current projects and/or other ones that are coming down the pike. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simms-Moten and Mr. Vizelini. Dr. Reed, did you have a question on item?
Yes, actually not a question. I just wanted to sort of bring up item D, number three, the resolution, approval resolution of Harding University Partnership School Community Resource Center. The reason why I'm bringing it up is the last time, we did talk about this in a report, but it was, I think, probably close to midnight. So I'm not sure if the public really heard what actually went down. But what we discussed at this very late meeting was really acknowledging the work that took place over a decade, and that UCSB's Gavert's Graduate School of Education has come together in this amazing collaboration with the Unified School District and Harding University Partnership School. And I just wanted to make sure that we can verbalize it in an earlier setting that this program proposes to expand this partnership by drawing upon the resources of UCSB campus and stewarding the fundraising development and coordination of new Community Resource Senator Center on Santa Barbara Unified School District property, which is adjacent to the Harding campus. So I just didn't want it to go unnoticed through the consent agenda item process and, and just acknowledge the, the incredible opportunity that we have here with this collaboration.
Duly noted, and we, our hats are off to all of the hard work that's happening at Harding, both from the school district perspective and also UCSB. And you're right, we did listen to that presentation close to midnight several weeks ago. So thanks for acknowledging it now at a normal hour. With that, I need a motion to pass the consent agenda, please. Ms. Simms-Moten, second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Great. Moving to the item of the hour, our action agenda, item E1, just to give a process explanation here. We are going to hear the report from staff first and then do comment on this agenda item so that the, potentially, the comments can reflect anything that was stated in the report if, if those of the public want, wish to. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Maldonado and the executive cabinet for the presentation on, I'll read the agenda item. It is approval to waive funding expenditures related to COVID-19 and distance learning allowed under Board Policy 3312 and Education Code 17604. That is language to explain that we're hearing their report. And then if, if the desire of the board to move forward on expenditures related to distance learning, given the pandemic. So Ms. Maldonado, take it away.
Thank you, more President Caps. And thank you for that explanation of what we're bringing to the board today, as we said earlier and as we've heard. And by now, we all know that Governor Newsom really changed some of the decisions that we were planning to make with you today when he challenged all of us to build high-quality, rigorous distance learning models for students as we look and continue to monitor the infection rates in our counties. You're going to hear more information, more details in a bit from the rest of the cabinet. These slides that we put together for you today will reflect just a first glance and an overview of some of the planning that we're continuing to do. As I stated in my opening comments, we did have a way for us to think about how to put in place contingency plans. It is not enough to just put in one plan in place and call it a hybrid, and that's what we're going to do. We really understand that during a pandemic like this and in these, these times with rapidly changing information and decisions that are being made, the district and staff need to be able to pivot one way or the other, whether it's completely distance learning or completely back to in-school settings. So to do that, I want you to know that after the announcement by Governor Newsom, I did hear from many teachers who expressed excitement about tackling this. They recognized that the spring was tough. It was an emergency mode teaching. And they are now bringing some more enthusiasm and expertise and lessons learned from the, the spring implementation. We have spent some time, like I said, in some resources, which you'll hear about later, for this development of a full reopen plan. Our hearts are broken as well to not be able to open schools and have our kids and teachers there. Of course, as a new superintendent, I would have wanted nothing more than to be able to visit classrooms and schools. But we had to pivot last Friday. With that said, we will be bringing to the board and posting publicly by the week of July 27, our full distance learning plan, which we'll continue to develop and share with some of our labor partners and some of their input. For our second slide, our focus slide, I want to just thank everybody who's spoken in support of the work that we are continuing. As I looked to become the superintendent of this district, one of the things that impressed me the most, and I've said in my first letter, that really resonated with my own values, was this idea of a commitment to equity and excellence. We know that the pandemic has exacerbated the inequities and has raised new concerns about some of our most vulnerable students, some of our students furthest from reaching the highest level of education. There has been reports around higher rates of COVID in communities of color where living circumstances are more densely populated. We also know there's inequities around access to stable Wi-Fi, a need for childcare, and learning support systems. I recognize that the anxiety is very high as people are continuing to worry about the virus, the way that it's mutating, the way that it's changing, of course, the health of their loved ones. Our Black Lives Matters movement has also put a glaring spotlight on many of the inequities we know existed and has all of us really searching for solutions and meaningful responses. I still remember the student demands by some of the brave students that we have in Santa Barbara Unified to this board. Of course, our economy is right now turbulent and filled with many unknowns. We will continue to focus on closing opportunity gaps and delivering on a promise for equity and excellent education. I do want to take a moment to announce to the board and to the public that even with this environment of anxiety, I have been overwhelmed with the care and compassion of so many of the generous people in Santa Barbara who have reached out to me and others that express their need and their desire to help. Many of them have answered a call to action to serve the most vulnerable in our community. Today, I received confirmation from an anonymous donor for a commitment to $100,000 to purchase internet access for approximately 1,000 families who we know from the springtime struggled and in some cases were really blocked from accessing learning due to a lack of stable internet, if any at all. This anonymous donor has provided us with the money to ensure that every student has access to hardwire internet access. And we're working also to purchase some noise reduction headphones for children who are in environments who may not make it so easy to concentrate. And I want to thank our anonymous donor publicly. I also want to thank the Santa Barbara Education Foundation, who will be assisting by administering some of the proceeds of this campaign to really get everyone connected. I've heard it said in other meetings that today's textbook is the, is access to the internet. A device in access to the internet is what used to be our access to textbooks in the past. So thank you to this coalition who's answered this call to help our most vulnerable in our community and make sure that we have full access to education. I am really overwhelmed with gratitude. And I have heard about the generosity of Santa Barbara, and today I can say that I've seen it in action. So with that said, I also want you to know that in our contingency planning, I am assigning two task force, one, two task force teams. One will be working solely on building out a robust, rigorous, and engaging distance learning plan. And the second team will continue to work on building out a hybrid and full reopen model so that we are ready to go when the health and safety guidelines have been met in Santa Barbara. And we're also exploring the possibility of offering some teachers an opportunity to teach from their classrooms. I have had teachers ask me if they can do that, and we're going to be continuing some plans around that possibility. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. John Beckill, Beckill, excuse me, with, continuing with our plans.
Well, thank you very much. And the slide that you have before you is, to continue with the introduction to our presentation, you have seen this slide before, but we really felt that it was important to get it back out in front of the public and the board. This really is our schema that we use as we organize and plan and make decisions around some of these important topics. So, you know, tonight you'll see in the presentation topics around health monitoring, student support, Wi-Fi, technical devices, community partnerships, all those topics. We really ran through this lens of our drivers, of all five of these drivers. And so we wanted to make sure that you have that in front of you. As we move forward, we will continue to use this really as our guide to making decisions and making solid plans for the opening of school and beyond. I think I'm turning it over to Fran.
Good evening, Ms. Maldonado, Ms. Caps, and the rest of the board. You know, an important piece of this is that we continue to monitor the COVID data daily, both our local context and also countywide. A review of our local context shows that within our district boundaries, we've experienced fluctuations in cases over the last few months. And this chart is representative of the data that we actually collect each day and add to it and review so that we can really see what's going on. You know, the good news coming out of the gate when we closed in March, the first few months went well. We actually, we flattened the curve in all the important areas. And then, as you can see on this chart, right around Memorial Day, you start to see it taking off. And that, that red line shows the number of cases locally. And so we did have a spike, and that, that spike had to do with Memorial Day, the reopening of, of businesses. And also, that was right after school closed with graduations and so forth. Since then, locally, we've been unable to, as a community, get back to that flattened point that we were at in early to late May. And that's really what we're shooting for now. So the bottom three graphs are, is our local data that we're monitoring. But the green line is countywide data that we are especially interested in because that's the number of cases of COVID in our county for people ages zero to 17. And our public health department does not disaggregate that by community. We can only see it as a countywide number. But what you can see is that that continues to grow. And what, what was a very small number back in May is now nearly 350 young people. Next slide, please, Mr. Rouse. So as we all know, Governor Newsom announced on Friday that we will require, that the state will require schools and counties on the watch list to go to online teaching until conditions improve. Currently, 33 of the state's 58 counties are on that list, including our own county. We've been on that list consistently since June 6. The, the metrics that place our county on the watch list are, first, an elevated case rate of greater than 100 per 100,000 residents. That number was 310 on the chart when I created the chart late last week. That number was 329 as of this morning. So unfortunately, we do have a long way to go. The second metric is test positivity rate. In cases where counties have between 26 and 99 cases per 100,000, the county has to have a test positivity rate of less than 8%. Our test positivity is hovering somewhere in the high 9% to 10%. It was at 10% this morning. So again, we do have a long way, way to go. Now, I know that at least one previous speaker spoke about the waiver, and we've had inquiries about the waiver for elementary schools. There is a waiver that districts can apply for to physically reopen elementary schools. On July 20, yesterday, our leadership team received information from Santa Barbara County Public Health on this matter. And given our county's high rate of daily new cases and high positivity rate in testing, the public health officer does not see the elementary waiver as an option. the elementary waiver as an option for the near future. There's a lot that still needs to happen before that can be a possibility. However, I do want to say to the board and to the public that that we will continue to monitor that situation and work with county public health, who we speak with regularly, attend meetings and communicate with to be poised to reopen when we can. So we're going to continue to reassess our status locally as it is our goal to return students to school as soon as health and safety allowed. I wanted to dispel any myth that's out there that we don't want to reopen schools. We are educators. We having students in school is why we do this work. And so we are going to do everything we can, as Ms. Maldonado said, to keep working to move us towards opening of schools. And the best way for us to move together towards that as a community is to follow safety protocols, to use our face coverings, to physically distance by six feet, use good hygiene, kind of stay within our tribes and not mix with with other groups. It's only going to work if we are all involved in solving the problem. So let's flatten that curve and get kids back in school. You know, some folks do point north to Santa Maria and other parts of the North County as the hotbed of COVID in our county. And Mr. Rouse, I'm on slide six now. They point to the North County as the hotbed of COVID. And it's true. Santa Maria sadly has an increased number of cases, but it's important to point out that we have employees in Santa Barbara Unified that live not just here locally in Santa Barbara, Galita, but also in Carpinteria and Lompoc and Bulton, Santa Maria, as far north as Arroyo Grande. And also, as you can see, in various parts of Ventura County. Therefore, we have to consider and watch the virus across over 100 miles of territory because of over 17% of our employees do not live within our district boundaries. So we, we talk about all of this data and we watch it because we have to take everything into consideration as we move towards reopening. You know, this virus is unwieldy and it has upended our lives in so many ways. But we will return students to school. Slide seven, please, Mr. Rouse. So board, we first brought this slide to you on June 9th as we introduced you to our plans for reopening the schools. And it was at that June 9th meeting that we shared that we would plan for three possible scenarios, not knowing what the future would bring. And looking back just less than two months ago to June 9th, we really didn't know what, where we would be today. And we don't know where we will be two months from now and four months from now. But tonight, we're here having learned on Friday about the closure of all schools. But we want folks to know that we want that even as one half of our team is working on that robust distance learning experience for students, the other half of us, as Ms. Maldonado said, are working on refining our plans to pivot to hybrid and to fully reopen reopening models. So when Santa Barbara Public Health Department and California Public Health give us the clearance to reopen schools, be it hybrid or full return, we will be ready. And, and I encourage our parents and, and our staff and students to keep this image in mind that we are working on all of this at the same time to get prepared. And at this point, I am very happy to hand this off to Ms. Sean Carey to explain the plan.
Thank you, Dr. Wagonick, and good evening, board and community. As has been said, we regret that conditions do not allow for our safe return to in-person instruction at this time. But as someone representing the team that is planning passionately for our distance learning program, I want to represent that under emergency school closures last spring, we learned a great deal in a short period of time about what does and does not work when it comes to distance learning. So we acknowledge that there were challenges, no doubt. And we also definitively know, I'm going to ask you, Mr. Rouse, to go back one slide still before we get to expectations from distance learning. There we go. We definitively know that students of color and those furthest from educational justice were and are disproportionately negatively impacted by some of those challenges. There are also many success stories last spring. And since then, we've been preparing for the possibility of a full remote scenario, even as we ready ourselves for all contingencies. We've taken great strides to equip ourselves to deliver a distance learning program that meets academic and social emotional needs of all students. And we're pleased to see that our planning aligns with what the governor's requirements for rigorous distance learning are, as communicated last Friday. We know that students, families and staff need to know the district's plan for distance learning so that expectations are clear as we prepare for a robust launch of high-quality distance learning on the first day of school, Tuesday, August 18th. So in addition to the information being shared tonight, we will make our district-wide distance learning plan publicly available next week. All principals will be prepared to disseminate the plan to staff prior to public posting. And all families will have the opportunity to participate in webinars that are hosted by principals to review the plans in more detail and through the lens of their particular school community. Before we shift to reviewing some of those expectations, I just want to take a moment to celebrate the existing strengths that we have as an organization to support distance learning. And some of these are very unique and not found in every district. Among them, we have our tech equity initiative, which not only furnishes devices to students, it's a one-to-one device program, but also two devices to teachers, so laptops and iPads. And this predates COVID-19. We have a workforce culture that's characterized by a commitment to continuous improvement, utilizing instructional supports provided by specialists and coaches, technology integrators and mentors. We've recently adopted the Meta Plan, which ensures learning environments that sustain students' language, culture and identities. And we have exemplary language access protocols in our district. We have embedded mental health services and we uniquely enjoy robust community partnerships in Santa Barbara. So now we'll go through what students, teachers and parents can expect as key attributes of our distance learning plan. Students, you'll notice in these slides that we've dividing the topics into sort of the operational side of the house and then the instructional core. So students can expect participation in rigorous distance learning with their teachers and classmates for multiple hours each day. And more consistency with that than was true in the spring. And there will be attendance taken daily or in the case of secondary schools by class period. There will be consistent weekly communication of teacher expectations. You can expect safe, culturally affirming and caring virtual classroom community, again, interacting live with your teachers as well as with your peers. And there will be lots of instances in which teachers are working with students individually or in small groups. And something we wanted to be really explicit about, and this we've spoken to earlier and actually in the days and weeks leading up to today and I'm sure beyond, is we will be pursuing enhanced opportunities to engage in co-curricular activities, whether that's remote or through other creative solutions. We are tracking with CIF on the athletic developments, developments for school athletics. But we're also very aware of people entering their senior year or beginning at a new school in ninth grade or seventh grade or kindergarten. And so we're aware of the things that, that, that are important to school that are not principally about academics, but are lots of what makes school fun for students and engaging. In terms of instruction, the higher the grade level that you students are in, the greater the expectation is going to be to complete assignments independently on a daily basis on top of the multiple hours of live instruction daily. We'll be assigning grades for secondary students. Students who have needs related to language development will receive support. And students who have learning differences will receive the appropriate services and accommodations that they need and deserve. We will also be furnishing, again, mental health services, counseling services and tutoring services to students. In terms of the nature of instruction, what we expect that you can see is a shift away from instruction that's variable across teachers to more consistently standards aligned and aligned, aligned with your classmates. We expect that you will see instead of curriculum that reinforces a dominant culture, curriculum that is reflective of the identities of yourselves and of your classmates, we expect that you will see things that motivate you intrinsically, activities and materials that are intrinsically motivating such as they're high on purpose, on relevance, on developing a sense of self-efficacy. Instead of memorization, we expect that you will see activities that engage your critical thinking and problem-solving skills that offer you choice and personalization of learning. We expect that you will engage in, in learning practices that are interactive and collaborative and that help you to optimize your learning and demonstrate growth over time as opposed to just being one way only of measuring or assessing what it is that you've learned. So we're going to right now walk just through four sample schedules of what we call a day in the life for four, for four example students. And to begin us off with our kindergartner, I will ask Ms. Lockridge to speak to our kindergarten student.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Good evening, President Capps, school board members, Superintendent Maldonado and our parents and community. I want to start off by saying how excited we are to welcome back to school our youngest learners in pre-K, in TK and in kindergarten. And I want to assure you that our teachers and our principals have thought a lot about what it means to bring this, our newest learners into their school communities. And they are actively planning social emotional lessons as well as how to create and engage a community of online learners. What would a day look like for your littlest one, your kindergartner? Well, they will log in to see a smiling teacher at them, to see their new classmates. They will have the joy of hearing their teachers read aloud and model how they think so that they can become great readers and thinkers as well. They will have breaks because one thing, if you've ever seen a kindergarten teacher know is they know when people need to get their wiggles out, they know when the puppet needs to come out and when singing is in order. And they will keep your students actively engaged and learning along with their peers. Additionally, your child will have access to a grab and go lunch. They will have access to art, music and PE and extended learning opportunities beyond the time that they may be with their classroom teacher. So that's what a kindergarten day would look like. And then for a fifth grader, which is a very cool age group, I must say, and I enjoy this group as well. They likewise will log in and see their classmates and they're going to be excited to see some of their friends that might have been in their class last year and make those connections again. And as a community of learners, they will both have small group and whole class instruction and be doing work with their peers. One of the exciting things for this age group is they really get to start thinking of developing the habits of mind of mathematicians and scientists and historians who study multiple perspectives and get to do all kinds of fun, fast science activities and collaborate with their school-aged peers. Likewise, they will have appropriate time for breaks and the grab and go lunch will be available to all students and families. Their music teacher will be thrilled to help them create beautiful music together. And we're going to keep them moving with creative online activities as well. Extra support is going to be made available. And teachers, they're going to be calling and checking on them and we will be taking attendance every day. So we are excited to welcome our fifth graders back into our online distance learning classrooms. And I'm going to let Sean Carey explain junior high and high school.
Thank you, Ms. Lockridge. Junior high students will begin the week meeting with each one of their teachers. But for the remainder of the week, we'll enjoy longer period blocks, two morning blocks of 80 minutes each and an afternoon block of 80 minutes as well. There'll be a 70-minute lunch. The day ends at 2:20 and here we see for an eighth grader, the highlighting of access to family services agency therapist as well as tutoring. For high school students, LaCuesta, students at LaCuesta and students in alternative education through Alta Vista programs will have their own specialized schedules. But for our three traditional comprehensive high schools, we'll have a consistent schedule of a semester block, which will actually afford increased course take opportunities for students at Santa Barbara and Dos Pueblos High Schools compared to what has been traditional. And the day will be characterized by two morning hour-long classes and two afternoon hour-long classes with a lunch period of an hour and a half, again, to afford opportunities for transitioning and grab and go lunches. And here we also see the highlighting of connections with a student's counselor. Speaking of counselors and staff, when it comes to what teachers can expect, teachers too need to ready themselves for instruction, the distance learning model that is going to be characterized by multiple hours of live instruction daily as well as updated lessons that students complete independently or with integrated supports. So operationally, teachers can expect very clear procedures for daily and weekly operational routines. Principals are working busily on that as we speak. And support with technology, language access, socio-emotional learning and the development of, of resources and the utilization of resources promoting anti-bias and anti-racism. And those are supports for our teachers. Instructionally, the expectation of teachers and from teachers will be clear and consistent communication of class and course expectations. The technology that's used and technology-based learning should enhance and enrich the curriculum appropriately and be standards aligned. And there'll be regular opportunities for professional collaboration that will help promote the alignment of curriculum and teacher practices based on our professional learning communities and the embedded time that we have and continue to dedicate to those professional learning communities. When it comes to professional learning, we know that, that teachers will continue to use the high-impact strategies that we've identified as a district or that they at school sites have identified through their school leadership teams. Many of the best in-person instructional practices translate well to the distance learning environment. But in other cases, new strategies need to be identified and developed in order to engage and support students' attainment of standards. Administrators will be using protocols for monitoring instructional practice and in order to support the ongoing professional development of the teacher workforce as well as effective instruction. And in evaluating our efforts, teachers will be expected to track measurable, attainable achievement based on evidence of student learning, which is true for all learners, but also with an intensive focus on students with disabilities and emergent multilingual students as we strive for equitable student outcomes. For emergent multilingual students, which is our district's term for students who speak a language other than English in the home, there will be peer-to-peer modeling of support for teachers. There will be specialized instructional methods that are appropriate for distance learning formats, smaller class sizes and language arts and language development courses and live instructional support provided by bilingual paraeducators and curriculum specialists. Grading practices and other assessment practices will be adaptive, both for emergent multilingual students and for students with disabilities. Students with disabilities will also continue to receive their specialized academic instruction that is tied to and provides access to the general education curriculum. Related services such as speech therapy, counseling and occupational therapy will be in place. And students' learning will be supported, their individual goal attainment will be supported by paraeducators. Extending professional learning. We will be providing and requiring professional learning prior to the start of the school year, but it will be on ongoing after the start of the school year. True pre COVID, but especially true since school closure. Teachers need to know how to effectively integrate knowledge of technology, knowledge of instruction and knowledge of content in order to be successful at all times, but especially in distance learning. So as we focus three strands of professional learning prior to the start of the school year on those domains. When it comes to to content, we're going to be walking all teachers TK 12 through our meta plan, which includes an emphasis on designated ELD for elementary school teachers and integrated ELD, English Language Development for secondary teachers. And just as our student learners are unique, adult learners too have varying needs. So there we see that with the contract that was approved in June for link will be having all teachers experience the transition to online learning module, which is really just the initial module and it allows serves as kind of a portal to opening up to teachers of their own personalized professional growth learning through the through the link platform. There's over 200 modules for in person and online learning with link and those modules help teachers design lessons that emphasize personalization, student agency, authenticity, connectivity and creativity with sample lessons and templates, videos and demonstrations and teachers, our own teachers can create and upload their their own content and share share with others. Link does offer training and support and professional learning when it comes to supporting students with disabilities and emergent multilingual students as well. And just as students interface with the online learning management system to access their learning, teachers will as well. There's a range of need that we have when it comes to technology training from beginner through intermediate to advanced. And so together, taken together, these three strands of professional learning again will be ongoing. But we will make sure that that all three strands are addressed by all teachers prior to the start of the of the instruction year, prior to the start of the school year. What parents can expect. Parents can expect timely information from principals in the school district. Parents can expect in home learning materials and supplies. Bilingual training and support for families on how to support rigorous distance learning. And staff initiated communication with interpretation when needed if concerns about student progress arise. As we all know, we're experiencing multiple events that are stressful, extraordinary and intertwined. And as such, we affirm our deep investment in conjunction with community partners such as Calm and FSA to ensure access to mental health services, to prioritize personal wellbeing and the cultivation of safe, supportive, culturally sustaining and equitable learning environments. And to promote the social and emotional competencies of both students and adults, including helping students to develop critical social and emotional skills that they need to cope and manage stress, build relationships, reflect on their experiences, express empathy for their peers and make decisions about how to keep themselves and their communities healthy, all of which is very pertinent in the time we're living in. Instructionally, parents can expect that students will be engaged in real time learning with a facilitation of a credential teacher for multiple hours every day and in accordance with the required instructional minutes of the state of California. And as with students, parents can expect to be able to access information about a student's status with relationship to their assignments, teacher expectations and their progress via one platform. And that platform is Neo. Continuing with the theme of of what parents can expect to experience, I'm handing it over now to Maria Larios Horton.
Thank you, Ms. Carrie. So building off the expectations of support for families for rigorous distance learning, we take very seriously the goal of helping our families feel welcome, engaged, supported and informed. Particularly in the unlocking the mystery of the public school system that can be oh so intimidating. As a language broker for my own family, I can tell you that this is work that is very near and dear to my heart. And we are going to work tirelessly to make sure that our families are served in the best way possible. So because of the feedback we have received from our families, we know that we need to continue as well as expand engagement opportunities, especially for our families for whom English is not their first language. We intend to use a community based support to increase and increased cross departmental efforts related to internet connectivity and training on the various learning platforms students will be expected to use. Beyond that, learning or adult capacity building for families will continue throughout the year in virtual settings. Some of the learning listed here, some of that is learning that is listed here on this slide. And we have evidence that with the right communication and notice, our families actively engage with learning through Zoom platform. Due to the special population parent input requirements set by our federal and state emergency funding, we will continue to use the focus group model to obtain representative and authentic feedback from our families of emergent multilingual students, students with special needs, socio economically disadvantaged students and from our homeless and foster youth students, families as well. All of these efforts are supported by our district's amazing centralized language access unit as well as our site based bilingual staff following the district's interpretation, virtual protocols or virtual interpretation protocols. Because our district counts on a small but mighty family engagement unit, we will continue to monitor the family engagement unit hotline for families when they are unable to reach our district staff or departments. With that being said, I appreciate the community's support in helping our families. And we can then turn this over to our next presenter. I think that's Todd.
Thank you, Ms. Larios Horton. Good evening, President Capps and board members. I'm here to briefly talk about devices and connectivity. We're really lucky when school closed last year to have already in place a third through 12th grade one to one program. This allowed us to really quickly take devices that we had as classroom devices and get those out to our key, our K, our TK through two students to ensure that we had a every one of our students had a device for the spring. Even though we were able to provide wifi to our families via hotspots to the vast majority of our families. As I explained to the board before, that even one student who didn't have access is is too much. So we are redoubling our efforts. We have a plan that will allow us to provide wifi hotspots to all students. The goal is to have all of our devices. So let me go back for a second. Our students kept their devices over the summer. So today, most of our students already have devices. We still need to get devices to our incoming seventh graders as well as students who are going to be new to the district. Our plan is to have that distribution done prior to the start of school. It has actually started today and will continue until complete. With regard to hotspots, we currently have 500 hotspots. We have ordering 300 more for a total of 800 hotspots. The initial hotspots that we purchased had a had a data cap. We are purchasing hotspots that are have unlimited data. We're also purchasing hotspots that work on all three of the major cellular networks, AT&amp;T, Verizon and T-Mobile. One of the things we found in the spring was at times the hotspots that we provided to some of our families, they lived in areas where Verizon didn't have great coverage. So we're going to take care of that by being sure that we have hotspots that work on all three of those cellular networks. The other thing we're going to be doing is that our hotspots are intended to be a temporary fix while we work with local high speed internet vendors to get families connected to home based high speed internet. As Ms. Maldonado pointed out, we've had a generous donation so we can so we can pay for the cost of internet services for our students that are furthest from educational justice. We're going to continue with help doctors. We're going to create help documents and training on key district systems, students or key district platforms for tracking student progress, not only for our students, but also so for our parents. So all parents can quickly find out how their students are doing. Like I said, our distribution has already been begun. We're going to use the same device distribution model that we did that we used during spring, which is a quote unquote, drive through model that allows us the ability to not have any contact with the public to ensure safety. Also, as Ms. Maldonado pointed out, we'll be purchasing noise reduction headphones for our families who need them. And all of that will be made available as soon as possible. I am going to now turn it over to Brian Rouse, who administered our most recent parents survey.
All right, thank you. So we wanted to make sure that we were really hearing the voices of our families as we considered school reopening models. So last week we ran a survey to ask the question, which learning model would work best for your student? We had a great response rate of 68% overall. 30% is usually pretty good for a survey to get a 68%. A response rate is really fantastic. One thing though, that's just important to point out is that we really only heard got responses from about half of our Latinx families, about half of our socioeconomic disadvantaged families. So we have some slides following this that break it down and disaggregate by those subgroups. Overall, though, the responses indicate a that we have about a 37% preference for a hybrid model, a 37% preference for a fully remote model and a 26% preference for a fully open model. Breaking it down by race and ethnicity and pointing out two of our two largest racial and ethnic subgroups. Our Latinx families and our white families prefer hybrid models to a similar extent, 35% and 38% respectively. While our Latinx families show a stronger preference for a fully remote model as compared to our white families versus a fully open model. Breaking it down by socioeconomic status, so we see a preference for our not socioeconomic disadvantaged families of 39% and 35% from socioeconomically disadvantaged families. And then once again, we see a slightly stronger preference for a fully remote model versus a fully open model by our socioeconomically disadvantaged families as compared to our non socioeconomically disadvantaged families. So now I am going to turn it over to Matt Didman to speak about food services.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening. You know, our main goal obviously in food services is going to be to try and feed as many of our students as possible with nutritious meals that support whatever form of learning environment we're going to be in. And so we're going to be able to do that, whether it's in a hundred percent online or if it's a hybrid model or we fully reopen and it's all in person. It'll be tailor made between depending upon each model. You know, since the shutdown and we served over 425,000 meals and we intend to keep going, exploring new ideas about new times of which we can serve and and different ways in which we can serve those meals as well. So for the hundred percent distant learning, we'll still be maintaining a version of our grab and go system. It'll be much like what you see now with some slight differences. And then we are exploring and trying to be creative and think out of the box of ways in which we can incorporate different ways of serving meals in both the hybrid model and if we fully reopen in in person. And so now I'll switch it over to the next presenter, I believe it's Kami.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much. Just wanted to start by saying in the slide, you'll see I've I've called out a couple of community partners that we're we're working with, but I'm really, I don't want to get emotional here, but I tend to because I'm I've been so blown away by the generosity in our community and the engagement in our community. You know how much I love this town. Everybody who knows me knows that, but I truly think we are exceptional in this regard. So we have been talking to lots of different organizations in town, donors in town, individuals who have really great ideas for things that we can be doing that they would like to support us in doing. One thing that that we're tasked with is kind of harnessing all of that generosity. So that's where I'm, Ms. Maldonado has asked me to step into that space and and help our team really take that in and get organized around all of these different offers from big things to little things, from identifying what the major gaps are, depending on which scenario we happen to be in. And I mean, it's a, it's a complicated work. These, our principals have stepped into that and really done the work to to provide us with kind of, I want to call wish lists of, you know, depending on what scenario we are in, these will be the gaps that we foresee and areas that we would love to get support in. So those lists are being developed. Without going into too much detail about that work, I'll tell you, and it's probably not a surprise to anyone that it has to do with facilities and staffing and transportation and in a lot of cases childcare or I call childcare or learning center spaces, spaces where kids can go and focus and to do this work. So we have community partners at the ready and I really look forward to sharing more detail on this as we as we get a little bit more concrete and what that's going to look like. Next slide, please. Thank you. So on the topic of communications, I'll tell you, it's it's an art, not a science. I feel like we're making progress in this arena. I feel that we are hitting it at every possible angle, but it just never feels like enough. You know, different styles of of learners, different types of audiences, and we're always adapting. I'll come up with something that I think is cool and meaningful and someone will love it and somebody else will say they didn't even see it, it didn't get to them, they couldn't understand it. So I'm constantly challenging myself on that and working with our team to provide really precise and easy to understand and follow, follow information. But we're in kind of complicated spaces too. So we, it's an, it's always a challenge. We've got, I'll just name a couple of things that we're doing that you're going to be seeing. We've got an informational video we're going to do that's going to really walk you through, I hope, in an engaging way, what distance learning is going to look like. We've really built out our website and I'm really, I'm really proud of it. Brian Rouse and I are like attached at the hip on this website. We spend a lot of time on it. So if you haven't gone to our website, it's, I would say about 90% fully bilingual in terms of the resources that we're sharing with our families and our community partners even and anyone in our community that wants to see what we're doing. I I think of the website as a great start for that and a great resource during these kind of uncertain times. And I want to let the board know that we'll, you know, we're, you bring us a lot of ideas and and that is so, we're so grateful to that. But we also are, we're, we'll try anything. We make phone calls home, we send postcards, we we host webinars, focus groups, surveys, you know, radio shows. We're trying to get the messages out there and also get the feedback in return, not just communicate out, but get the feedback back in so we can keep informing our our decisions and our plans. And so that's what I wanted to say on this topic. You guys already know all the different tools we have. You know, from Parent Square to the website to social media. So please follow us in those spaces and let us know if you're not getting our messages or need help on or have questions that if we're not being precise in our communications, I'm, I love to hear from people. And I really appreciate the board's support in this as well. So thank you. That's all I have to say on that one. And oh, yes, thank you to our local journalists who are helping us tell our story. And yes, sometimes there are some of the stories I had cringe when I read them, but I truly do appreciate the reporters who cover our meetings and help us communicate with their readers. who cover our meetings and help us communicate with their readers in this really strange time that we're all in. So, thank you. Next speaker, I think, is Ms. Maldonado.
Nope.
No. Sorry. Thank you.
No worries. Good evening, board members. So, here's the physical condition. We are, I want to explain this chart. In the orange is if we fully reopen in person. The blue, bluish-green is the hybrid method. And then, the greenish tone is, or hue is the distance learning. So, first of all, I want to talk about the PPE, which is the personal protective equipment. We've been starting to purchase this since the beginning of June. We were so concerned that when we reopened in August that things would not be in place. So, we went to town. We started buying sanitizers and the thermometers, and we had our nurses go out and look at the thermometers and check them out. They're the no-touch thermometers. We have also gotten our custodians fully trained in how to clean the classrooms and disinfect the classrooms. We've bought face protections. We've got masks, two masks and student. We're also buying face shields for every staff and student. We're working on the counter-protection partitions for the office when they come out and meet with the community. So, when we're, when we go back to classrooms, and we will go back to schools, we're ready to keep our students and our staff extremely safe. So, if we go back to fully reopened in person, of course, that's going to be one of the most expensive models because of the social distancing and the cleaning, and also the number of staff. If we all come back 100%, we'll need more teachers, so that will increase the staff. And this doesn't even include if we open all the way up to 12th grade. The hybrid is a little bit more, less expensive, and that's because we're only hiring about another 30 FTE for classified staff to help us with bringing the food to the classrooms, disinfecting, watching the kids on the playground, and just helping out our certificated staff. And then, of course, the distance learning, when you don't have the kids on campus, there's less cost. But when we are ready to open, and we will be ready to open, and some, someday soon, we all want that, so we need to be prepared. And I believe that the district is in good, is in good shape for that to happen. So, I'll turn that over to, sorry, the recommendations. This is Maldonado.
Thank you, Meg. Thank you, everybody. And board members, as you can see, we've been doing lots of contingency planning. We know that this is the type, times that require us to be adaptable, flexible, and focused on our children's education. And as things change, conditions change, we want to be able to ask that the board grant us an ability to make those adaptable changes and expedite purchasing of supplies and services. We know that if there's any delays, it could, you know, could be a detriment to our ability to deliver either a rigorous distance learning model, a hybrid model, or a fully reopened model. So, we're requesting that you allow us to, that you allow funding expenditures related to COVID-19 and distance learning without board approval, as is allowed under Board Policy 3312 and Ed Code 17604. This ends our presentation, board members. Before we take action, I do want to just send a message to our students. Just because we're starting 100% remote does not mean we're not engaged with you or that we don't care about your experiences. We will do our best to engage you in lots of creative ways so that you can continue with your friendships, with your learning, with your teachers, and also principals and teachers who are watching us tonight. It's time to remember our first-time teaching and get really creative in ways to engage and motivate all our youngest learners and our graduating seniors as well. So, thank you. And I'll turn it back to you, Board President Capps.
Thank you to the team. I really appreciate it. Before we get into board comments and questions, we are now going to take questions and, I'm sorry, comments, not questions, but comments from the public who have asked to speak to this agenda item. That is Ms. Trujillo to announce the names.
Thank you, Board Member, or President Capps. We have a total of 26 public speaker requests, so I will start with the first five, which is Karen Rice, Carolyn Hera, Eliana Orozco, Laura Gomez, Victor Carmona. So, I will start with Karen Rice. Karen, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to you all for your work. My name is Karen Rice. I am a kids pastor at one of our churches here in Santa Barbara. And I'm also an ethicist. In those roles, I recognize that we have a moral and educational duty to prioritize equity. Our schools are only as successful as the most marginalized and vulnerable of the students and families are. And their success doesn't happen by chance, and it doesn't happen at the expense of others. So, the success of our school district requires focus on those left behind because of racism, classism, ableism, and other inequities. And the focus on equity will actually benefit all students of all races and economic statuses. So, however we move forward with the reopening, I support and welcome Superintendent Maldonado's focus on equity in any of these plans. I thank the superintendent and all leadership of the school district who priorities, prioritize equity for the good of all, not just the marginalized students, but if we focus on them, that will improve the well-being and learning of all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Caroline Hera. Caroline, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hear me? Yeah. Great. Good evening. My name is Caroline Hera, and I'm a parent of a senior at Dos Pueblos High School and a seventh grader at Santa Barbara Junior High. I'd like to thank you all for your time. Thank you also for your willingness to listen. This was evident in your communication related to the district's commitment to rigorous distance learning instruction and the plans presented tonight. However, I do have one addition to your stated commitment, and I hope you will agree. Parent volunteers are more important now than ever before, and we want to help. Dozens of parent leaders and volunteers from K-12 schools across Santa Barbara County have begun to organize under a grassroots effort named SB Plan or Santa Barbara Parent Leadership Action Network. We recognize that we are not the only group of parents looking to help. However, the intention of SB Plan is to work with you and other organizations to help our schools improve academic, social, physical, and emotional outcomes for K-12 children in Santa Barbara County. History tells us that when parent leaders and volunteers are engaged, they can make a world of difference for our schools through education and outreach, advocacy, community building, and fundraising. We ask that you please commit to working with SB Plan and other parent organizations to help you address challenges related to distance learning as you prepare for the safer turn of students to the classroom.
Hi.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eliana Orozco.
Eliana, can you hear us? Si. Good evening. Thank you for prioritizing health and keeping our students safe. How will you help low-achieving students in reading, writing, and math, special education children, and English language learners? With regards to students who did not enter the Zoom classes because they did not have access to the internet, did you contact the families to let them know the child did not enter the class that same day? Teachers, thank you from the bottom of my heart for your great work. But please, teachers, pay attention to each child so that it does not become too difficult for them, and they can understand and not get behind for the following year. Blessings. I know this has been already discussed, but I wanted to repeat it. And even more, it fills my heart and I lump in my throat right now. I am saying because of the COVID-19 situation. My friend and her family, three children from San Marcos, are infected with COVID-19. For me, it is very painful because I am the only one who brought them food. Thank God, two acquaintances helped to bring them groceries. But it is terrible to be in this country and not have help. Thank you for keeping the health of the students as a priority. Que efecto sería. Gracias.
Gracias. Next is Laura Gomez.
Laura, can you hear us? Can you hear me? Yes, you may begin. Thank you. Good evening, honorable board members and members of the public. First, I want to talk to you about the FIDA report, which has already been delivered to you. A group of white and Latino parents participated and analyzed and discussed the reopening of schools focused on the hybrid model. Both parents and students expressed concern, fear, confusion, and uncertainty as there were more questions than answers. In the end, the parents, based on their own experiences, needs, and points of greatest concern, made a series of recommendations. On the other hand, regarding the governor's announcement and the guidelines to follow for the possible reopening of schools, parents continue to be concerned about what will happen. Health comes first. As long as there is no vaccine against COVID-19, the risk of an outbreak is always present. And the question arises, will it be worth it to put thousands of students at risk to attend their classes in person? Finally, we know that some white parents have felt minimized by mentioning more attention and support for multilingual, disabled, and African-American students who have long been neglected. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Victor Carmona. Victor, nos puedes escuchar?
Victor, can you hear us? Yes, can you hear me? You may begin. Good evening, and thank you to each one of you for your efforts. My name is Victor Carmona. Tonight, I would like to comment about the devices that are going to be distributed to the students and how they are of utmost importance to education in distance learning, a hybrid model, and in the traditional way. In this very difficult time with so many challenges, parents are a fundamental part of this situation. For this reason, the suggestion is that if any part of the district's budget allows money to provide some type of device for parents who need it and who request it, because with all the necessary applications to be able to help the students and at the same time to be more aware of their students, if they are up to date on homework together with teachers, check grades, among other things, in this way, the community could be involved in the education of their children in a more adequate way, and at the same time, they would have a personal benefit by learning something that perhaps they would otherwise find difficult or impossible to do. This could have a positive impact on both students and parents who want to be part of the solution to the situation. Thank you for your attention. Thank you.
I will call on the next five speakers. Marina Sarate, Margarita Mendoza, David Han, Jenny Spurling, and Erin Jones. Marina Sarate.
Marina, can you hear us? Yes, can you hear me? You may begin. Good evening, councilmembers. Superintendent Maldonado, my name is Marina Sarate. I am a mother of three middle and high school students in this district. And I understand firsthand the difficulties we will face starting this school year with distance learning. We know you have worked hard and that the decisions you make are with updated information and always thinking about the education of our students, especially the most vulnerable groups. I also know that distance learning will not meet the needs of all families, but unfortunately, this is our reality. This is a time to work as a community. Instead of attacking each other, we must accept that inequality and inequity exists and has existed for a long time in our schools. During the spring, we understood that we were not prepared to provide an equitable education to our students. For that reason, we must focus on what is really important, our students. We must work to facilitate distance learning and ensure that all students have the necessary tools to participate in their studies, that everyone have access to a device, the internet, and a safe space where they can attend their classes, that they have access to counselors, access to individual discussions with teachers, and mental health support as soon as they need it. Let us be positive and learn to work as a community, always identifying the needs of our students. We must prepare ourselves and make sure that they all receive a high-quality education in a safe and healthy environment. Thank you.
Tiempo. Gracias. Next, we have Margarita Mendoza.
Margarita, can you hear us? Yes. Good evening, everyone. I am a mother of two children. My daughter is entering sixth grade at Roosevelt School, and my son is three years old. I want to mention that we are in agreement with distance learning for all students. I would like that in order to achieve better parent participation, that we offer attractive and informative workshops to learn how to use the internet. Technology is difficult for some parents. We know that some students are cared for by grandparents, aunts and uncles, or guardians, and many of them have no idea how to surf the internet. It is difficult for them to create an email, download an application, use platforms like Zoom, etc. It is key and very important to support guardians with these workshops to be prepared and informed of the education of their students. Thank you. Good night.
Gracias. Next, we have David Han. David, can you hear us?
Hello. I called last week. I don't have much to say because I'm honestly stoked to hear some of the things that you guys have planned since last week. What I'm concerned about was parents and them knowing, parents knowing how to use Neo. I work at La Cumbre Junior High School, so a lot of my students or, and when I call families, they have no idea how to navigate Neo and don't know what their students' grades are. So, my ideal situation in a remote learning environment is to be working with parents. So, if we could really support parents on how to use Neo, let them know the intricate parts of Neo and sing each assignment. Of course, every teacher is going to have different expectations, but if we're using Neo as our general platform, I think that should be a priority. So, I just wanted to advocate for that, but it seems like you guys have an idea. So, I'm stoked to see that you guys are working and doing things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jenny Spurling. Jenny, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, school board members. My name is Jenny, and I'm a doctoral candidate in the Gobert's Graduate School of Education at UCSB, an alumni of undergraduate studies at UCSB and a community youth educator. More importantly, I'm a white woman who is constantly embarrassed by the white parents and community members who disparage your leadership when you show support for any diversity, equity, and inclusion effort. Their white noise is far too loud, and their opinions are rooted in white supremacist ideologies. Their perspectives make these meetings and equity initiatives about themselves and their own whiteness. Tonight, I speak in support and welcome Superintendent Maldonado and your values. I am also in support of 100% remote instruction with an understanding that major changes to inclusion and equity are paramount to our future. This is to be done through the plan you all shared with us tonight, thank you, that highlights training teachers in culturally sustaining pedagogies and anti-racist practices for online instruction dedicated to meeting the needs of students of all races, genders, sexual orientations, and abilities. If we do not commit to meeting the needs of minoritized students, particularly Latinx and Black students, for upcoming fall instructions online, we are complicit in ultimately reproducing inequalities. Many youth community organizations and alternative learning spaces are currently doing this work in our community, the transformative justice work needed for change. And I suggest we continue to collaborate and learn together, specifically highlighting the opinions and ideas of our youth in these conversations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Erin Jones. Not able to find Erin. Don't leave her. Okay, Erin's not online. I'm going to go to the next five. Five next speakers. Karen McBride, Kristy Tarman, Chris Kramer, Olivia Davy, Sarah Henderson. Karen McBride, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Maldonado. I'm Karen McBride with Santa Barbara Teachers Association. And now that we have a definitive model for our reopening plan, I just want to speak a little bit about the commitment that our educators have to the new school year that's just three weeks away. And I want to remind you because a lot of the verbiage in the slides that we saw tonight when it referred to our educators was about teachers, but we also have counselors and nurses and psychologists and speech and language pathologists. I just, I just always feel like it's important to make that reminder because there are lots of roles that our, our members fill. Anyway, throughout the fourth quarter of our last school year, our certificated staff members worked tirelessly to follow the directives and schedules they were given to complete a school year, which was obviously so very different and unexpected for everyone. And they learned new online applications for their jobs. And it left many wanting to learn more. And so throughout the summer, many of my members have reached out to me asking for professional learning opportunities to meet any learning model that we might end up with. And I also want to say that, that a lot of our members have advocated for learning resources to teach parents about the, the learning and communication tools that they are experiencing throughout this novel time in education. So I, I just wanted to give that shout out to Margarita Mendoza and David Han, who both spoke to that just before me. And I want to let you know that dozens of our members have been meeting all summer to advocate for and prepare for a greater focus on equity and anti-bias program. Our educators have expressed to me a desire to get back to accountability and standards for teaching and learning that they're accustomed to so that they can continue the work that is so important to them. And above all else, our members have expressed a strong desire to get back into the classroom with their students as long as it is safe. All right, thanks so much, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Next is Christopher Kramer. Chris, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I want to speak in support of Superintendent Maldonado and her commitment to equity in online education. I teach online at Santa Barbara City College, and I'm aware of the data that demonstrates the barriers that non-white students face with in-person classes and that it's worse with fully online education. And these aren't new facts. For a long time, we've had the data that supports Maldonado's proposal to help all students. And as a reminder, she said at one point in part, quote, "Our number one priority is to deliver rigorous distance learning that meets the needs of all students, especially our multilingual learners, students with disabilities, and African-American students," end quote. Her use of "especially" there does not mean only non-white students, nor does it imply at the expense of white students. I see this as a white parent. Both those interpretations ignore the words "all students." We're not confused when a doctor says we need to help all these patients, especially the ones who are in the greatest need for medical care, those who have not been given it to date. Some are tired of hearing about equity and systemic injustice, but I bet hearing about oppression pales in comparison to actually experiencing it. Seeking to raise some students' level of access and opportunity that white students currently and have always had is not an act of oppression against white students.
Fine. Thank you. Next, we have Olivia Davy. And Olivia is no longer online. So next, Sarah Henderson. Sarah, can you hear us?
Yes, hello.
Yes, go ahead.
Great, good evening, everybody, and welcome Superintendent Maldonado. I'm here to voice the support for increasing equity in our online learning attempts for the upcoming semesters. A quick word to the detractors of this program. It is outrageously selfish to see a statement on equity and immediately only think of your in-group, in this case, white people. For such detractors, I ask, how could you possibly avoid the obvious fact that marginalized students will need more support? You claim the moral high ground, and yet you advocate for segregation, and you leave the most at-risk children in the dust. I trust that the board is educated enough to know that equity uplifts all students. And that's, and that just because privileged children are not specifically mentioned does not mean they're not forgotten. And I hope that any detractors can take a moment to do some much-needed research on the subject of equity. You're doing a great job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are James Finkner, Sheridan Rosenberg, Chelsea Steele, Justin Shores, Jennifer Hale. Sheridan. Sheridan, can you hear us?
Hang on one second. Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry about that. So while we're on the subject of equity, I've actually been getting phone calls from friends of mine who have children in special ed. And they asked me to ask you, you know, I understand that we have a lot of hoops to jump through with where in, where out when it comes to the waivers, but they're very concerned. Does this mean that the governor has put a temporary waiver on IEPs? And they're very concerned also about access to paraprofessionals? So there's continuity of care for their children? Apparently, the paraprofessionals work alongside the teacher during the times when they're, when they're giving instruction to their special needs children. And, you know, this is a group of very, again, you know, I totally understand that you're addressing equity, but parents and students in special needs really need a lot of attention right now, and especially some guidance on, you know, the, their IEPs, the current status of that, and the paraprofessionals that most of them are entitled to. So I, I think that that's something that we definitely need to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have James Finkner. He was online. One second. Mr. Finkner, are you there? He's not there. We'll just go to the next one. Chelsea. Chelsea Steele. Chelsea, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I want to voice my support for Superintendent Maldonado's and the board's leadership for equitable education during the pandemic and beyond. I nanny and babysit for multiple families in Santa Barbara, and most of the families I work for are either white or if not, they're economically privileged and hence able to pay me a somewhat living wage. While I have love for all the kids I'm taking care of, I experience their privilege firsthand. They are loved and cared for extensively and have endless support to thrive. None of these kids or kids from fair education families will have less opportunities by learning in an environment that uplifts and supports all students. That means to focus on the students that do not share that privileged life. For people that are too fragile for equitable change and feel like their white children will be marginalized growing up with an equitable mindset, I hope you find your heart and will eventually learn that equity is good for all of us. I'm white, and for white folks that are so offended by being called white supremacists, I think that we're all white supremacists unless we actively work to dismantle the racist unjust systems that have been built by and for white people. We are white supremacists if we keep living comfortably without doing anti-racist work and fight for equity for all. Please keep your equitable education efforts going, and I look forward to vote and will mobilize others to vote for representatives that support equitable education. Thank you.
Fine, thank you. Next, we have Justin Shores. Justin, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to ask when you will consider literacy a public health crisis. With systemic racism, you know, from our public schools, from them not teaching underprivileged students to read, arguably leading to the, the school-to-prison pipeline, I think that needs to be a bigger focus for you guys as, as a group. The state of California has the lowest literacy rates in the U.S. and the, and the state is being sued because of it. So I just need to think about that. I think most parents are okay with ethnic studies and sex ed as long as the ethnic studies are not racist themselves and the sex ed is not pornography. So we can, we can all come to the table, have more conversations about the curriculum we're putting, not just label it ethnic studies and have it all white guilt. And I could tell, hear all this hate for white people from white liberals. But we have a pretty, pretty diverse group of parents that are listening to this, this call right now. So I would say it's, it's, look and look on the inside of yourselves. Also, for teachers, know that a lot of us parents are essential workers. We've been working hard. We haven't been getting paid. So you have to realize that you got to take a little of a risk. You know, we, we work hard. We, we take care of you right now while you guys are doing what you're doing. So I got to say, our kids are being left out, and you're leaving out a lot of underprivileged students too. So stop attacking us. Stop attacking parents. This is a coordinated attack. And it sounds like it's coming from the board because you're not stopping it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Hale. Jennifer, can you hear us? Jennifer, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can go ahead.
Hello, I want to sincerely thank and applaud our district's commitment to equity and inclusion as we all do our best to embrace the online learning. There's no doubt that all of our families are experiencing unprecedented stress and anxiety. But some of our families, primarily families of color and low income, are worrying about keeping a roof over their head and food on the table. It's these same families and students that will experience a larger opportunity gap and inequities from an online school model. This is a fact supported by overwhelming data. And I feel it's important to voice this because the unfair education members continue to spread misinformation about the equity initiatives the district is implementing. Their disparaging remarks and false rhetoric are fear-based and completely out of touch with reality. They need to be called out because their white supremacy mentality only serves to create division and is harmful for all students. The data shows that students benefit from teachers who receive equity training. The data shows that they benefit from culturally inclusive curriculum, such as ethnic studies. It shows that they benefit from individualized support, particularly for marginalized groups. Our students need informed leaders who make decisions based on research, facts, and data. So thank you so very much for working hard to create meaningful and rigorous online curriculum and for leading us all with an equity mindset. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are Janet Mendoza, Mari Flores, Nylem Mathis Lewis, Grace Wallace, Alice Post, Greg Hamel. So I'll start with Janet Mendoza. Janet, can you hear us? Janet, can you hear us? Can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me? Yes, okay. Yes, hello. I work in a child development center, and we usually have about 40 children in this center. We have been open since April, and we have follow-up and sanitizing guidelines, and no one has gotten sick. Children are healthier than ever. Teachers are healthier than ever. I, you know, we work there Monday through Friday. And, you know, I also would like to say that due to this new COVID thing and everything that is happening and online is school only, Hispanic parents will be affected the most, not only economically, but in every single way that you cannot imagine in my community. So I would like to suggest to the school board to find a way that they could give some money and pay the parents so one of them can stay with the child and work at, at home with the child to zoom into the meetings and do the, the classwork with the children and assist the teacher. I would also like...
I want to talk to my Hispanic community right now, who's online, and let them know that the school district has not done a good job of alerting our Hispanic community about the new curriculum, about the new teaching agendas they are going to give about sex education and ethnic studies. Please inform yourself, seek help, go and ask questions about teen talk. They will teach our daughters and sons that they can have an abortion without parental permission at the age of 12. They will teach them that they can have anal sex at 12 years old. And if they do not want to get pregnant, to go and have anal sex.
Gracias. Next, we have Mari Flores. Mari Flores is no longer online. Our next speaker is Grace Wallace. Also no longer online. Alice Post. Alice, can you hear us?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Oh, hello. My name is Alice Post, and I'm a former, former parent of a child in the district who are now, my children are now in their twenties. I know we're in a global pandemic and there's no roadmap, but I'm not, I don't think it's acceptable what the governor has decided, and I don't think it's acceptable what you've decided. Roseanne Crawford wrote an article in EdHep today advocating for the hybrid, and she made a lot of cogent points about the collateral damage of staying in distance learning. Mostly, it's about the emotional needs of children. Sitting in front of a computer is not healthy, and it's not right. There doesn't need to be a one-size-fits-all, and I was impressed by your survey that showed that it's about, you know, 30% of parents want to get back into school, 30% want to stay in online. Well, why can't you do, give parents what they want? If only 30% want to come back, why don't you open up for 30% as soon as the governor lets you? And Roseanne also made a very important point about outside learning. We have lots of outdoor space, and it's very safe to teach children outside six feet apart. Why aren't we doing that? I'm doing that as a teacher. I teach individually. You know, we have trails, we have beaches, we have so much space. Please, please, for the sake of the emotional health of our children, let the ones that are depressed get back in the classroom now.
Thank you. Next, we have Greg Hamel. Greg, can you hear us?
Yes, just a second. Oh, my God. Greg? Yeah.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, hi. Yeah, I've been listening to calls about segregation and racism and white supremacy. I just wanted to let those folks know that it was a fair parent who challenged the all-white school board at Glade Union School District to end segregation in our community. The schools of Mountain View, Felt Hill are all white, mostly white. The schools of La Patera and Hollister, mostly Hispanic. And all these kids from Old Town get bused there. And I challenged the school district to end segregation, and they fought me on it. And it was a bunch of progressives and Democrats. It was the superintendent of the school, it was the school board, and the teachers. And they're mostly progressive and Democrat. They are the ones that make segregation happen in our community. They are the real culprits. I, as a fair parent, had to fight against them. I was unsuccessful. But I realized who they really are. So you need to know that, all you Democrats out there calling us white supremists, you need to get your Democrat allies in Glade Union School District and end segregation now. The kids at La Patera perform 50% worse than the kids at Mountain View.
Fine, thank you.
Yes, thanks.
And our final speaker is Jill Rivera. Jill, can you hear us?[1783.92] Jill, can you unmute yourself?
Oh, yes. Oh, good, good. Okay, hi everyone. Um, good evening, board and welcome Superintendent Maldonado. Um, Laura, I like the way you started the meeting by describing that story about the World War II person and, and the, the fact that, you know, her parent helped her read. And it highlights the profound impact a parent can have on early childhood literacy. But unfortunately, as we know, many of our young people do not have parents who have literacy skills, making it a challenge for them to help their children. And I think this is really exacerbated by remote learning. Um, and my, my point is that a focus on equity should be a focus on literacy. Remote learning has uncovered a lot of vulnerabilities in the school district, namely the lack of adopted reading and math curriculum in grades kindergarten through sixth. So when we went to remote learning, a lot of teachers were left with just supplemental materials and ad hoc, um, you know, things to teach with. And that really, really hurts our, our, you know, disadvantaged kids even more. My point too is that I would like to have the schools open as soon as possible. And one of the things that the business community did to reopen was they asked, they work with the state and they, the state didn't, they did not count the Lompoc prison numbers in the total count. And that improved the statistical picture to make the impact a little bit better with regard to just looking at numbers. So I think our kids need to be around each other. The risk to children is, has been proven to be low. They need to be together for language development and literacy.
Time, thank you. President Capps, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. Thanks to all of our speakers and again to the staff for that comprehensive report. And now it's the time for the board to ask questions, make comments, and dive into the presentation so that we end up at a motion to allow for resources in this new model of remote start. I will let my, uh, any of the board members who wish to speak to go first. Dr. Reed, I see you first.
Thank you, President Capps. And before I, before I ask some questions, I wanted to just share some observations and some considerations based on this PowerPoint and also the messages that I've been receiving from parents and teachers and principals. I believe, as has been stated, that the best situation we could ask for would be that we are clear to move back to face-to-face classrooms where we all know that it is optimal and the most optimal experience for teaching and learning. But I, as we all know, we need to watch the metrics daily and stay in communication with public health and wear our face masks and do our job at social distancing. And I know we as a community can do it and achieve our face-to-face learning once again. Uh, I wanted to make a, a point to really acknowledge the superintendent, the cabinet, our administration and teachers for coming together to design these rigorous programs. And I really appreciated the day in the life of our students that you framed for the community. I think it was really a great way to show the transparency of what that would look like for your child within those grade levels. But you can imagine that that is how it's been scaffolded for other grade levels as well. And I also appreciated the comprehensive approach and transparency about all aspects of the district. And I wanted to thank Meg Jete for charting out and providing the fiscal considerations so that we can have the exact costs on what we are facing and realize that we are in a, in a good position currently, but that we need to keep and stay focused on being fiscally responsible. I think it's incredibly vital and as we've heard from many of the speakers tonight and through many of our board meetings, that we do keep equity and the social emotional health of our students at the forefront of district discussions and teacher professional development. And we must focus on serving all students and continue leading with the equity mindset that we strongly should support. As you may know, and as I've said in many of us and countless board meetings, that equity is a passion as of mine throughout my career in education and in my role as a board trustee. So I believe that the framework that Dr. or Ms. Maldonado or Superintendent is framing, that being that equity be at the forefront is crucial in our work with remote teaching. And as a past classroom teacher and we, as we move into remote learning, I, I really want to really push the importance of encouraging and the building of personal connections between teachers and students. I think there's an assumption and, you know, warranted or not, that remote learning is not going to provide these opportunities for connections. There is opportunities to build connections with students, not in the way that we are used to, but, and maybe not at the most optimum way. But if we make an effort and purposeful effort to really find creative ways to build opportunities to work and formulate these relationships, no matter what grade level. It doesn't have to just be K through five, but K through 12. The importance of one-on-one connections with teachers. And I appreciated in the PowerPoint, um, the way that you accentuated that work and the idea of purposeful relationship building. So I'm, I'm really mindful of that and I'm really hopeful that that really will be the, another piece that will be crucial in the, the bringing back of our students to the classroom and the mental health of our students, the social and emotional well-being, to feel connected to their teacher in some way. I also appreciated the rigorous, um, remote teaching formats that you're providing. And again, as I have shared, the importance of really strategizing and using this opportunity to put a lens and a flashlight on to our literacy and academic scores. And understand that with this work and this rigor, that we really have and are poised to really make a difference for our students and perhaps in these small cohort sizes that, and, and frameworks that we're going to be working in. Um, I made a point to reach out to our elementary and secondary principals and teachers so that I could get an understanding, not just from the district's perspective, but from the people in the trenches. And what was interesting to learn was just the considerations of both principals and teachers depending on the grade level they are teaching. There was a, a teacher today that reached out who teaches TK through second grade classrooms and, um, is questioning and wondering about these new schedules that are designed for teachers and students to participate in. And so I think with new changes and procedures, it's important that clarifications are made with each situation. And I wanted to ask and reach out to Dr. Wagonick to ask a little bit more about how these schedules were designed. According to my conversation with her, these schedules are supported by the SPTA. But I'm wondering, Dr. Wagonick, if you could recommend what might teachers do if they have questions about these models and these schedules in terms of maybe their experiences with the children they teach? Is there flexibility with these models and what might they do if they have questions about them?
Well, um, thank you, Dr. Reed. I, I would welcome my colleagues to also jump in on this as we've all been involved in this. But, but so that families and the board understand, different grade spans have required number of minutes that must be fulfilled. And what we've provided, uh, for you tonight is really the, um, the infrastructure or skeleton of the schedule of, of looking at the, at the blocks. But in terms of flexibility and what happens within those blocks is going to be, um, that's really the work that will be happening in the next three weeks. And of course, teachers are going to have flexibility in terms of if you have a group of kindergarteners, you may see a block of time of an hour. I would be mortified if I saw, um, 22 kindergarteners sitting still in front of their, their iPads for an hour. It, it's not right and it shouldn't happen. And so in terms of, I don't want folks to think that things are locked into that extreme. But, um, you know, teachers are experts and they know when to give breaks and when to have students get up and move. Learning is hardwired, um, through movement. And so all of those things will be taken into consideration. Does, does that address the question you were asking?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, there's a concern that this is the, the framework that I must work from. And if I go off in a, in one way or another, or deviate in any way, that I'm not following this, uh, format that you framed. And therefore the, this could cause duress perhaps with parents or, you know, and, and it, you're not following perhaps that particular, um, design.
Well, Ms. Lockridge has, in terms of elementary, Ms. Lockridge has been working with the elementary principals on, you know, what will happen during those blocks of time? Um, and so while we say that teachers have flexibility, we have to be very clear that, you know, literacy, eh, reading, critical thinking, math, science, the core subjects need to be taught. And so there will be a schedule, just as in, in secondary schools, there is a schedule for what happens and when. Flexibility will be in terms of what happens within those blocks of time, when those subjects are being taught.
Great. And so essentially the, the role of the teacher would be to work with the principal, to work with their PLC leaders, to work together, to collaborate, to say, hey, this might work well for TK, but second and third grade, we do something differently. And that really is between the school and the culture within that school and the relationships that are formulated between the principal and the teachers in the trenches.
Absolutely, along with what, what is best practices within a distance learning online model.
Thank you. I, I also heard from principals and parents about the concern with relationship to Cox and, um, and whether they're pulling back on their free wifi. And I, I want to acknowledge a parent comment to, tonight about wanting workshops on using the internet. And I'm hoping that we can provide some sort of support. And that way, I think Ms. Maldonado mentioned that as well. But, um, I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Rickman because when, I didn't understand what he meant by hotspots. I'm like, what does that mean? So what are hotspots? And how is that really helping us achieve 100% of our students being connected to wifi? And, and Mr. Rickman, could you just explain what a hotspot is so that, um, the community can understand that if they don't?
Sure, I was actually looking around my office to see if I had one to, um, to show you. So hotspots are basically hockey puck-sized, uh, devices that connect to a cellular network. So they, they, they run on T-Mobile, they're, they're very similar to your cell phone, except you don't make calls on them. You use them as a gateway or a door to the internet. So when we provide hotspots to our families, um, the, the, one of the things that we changed at the, the beginning of, um, the spring, uh, remote learning is that we, we were giving a single hotspot to a family. And we learned that that, that wasn't a recipe for success because the spot, the hotspot wasn't capable of, of supporting two or three devices in the home. So what we did was we started giving hotspots to each individual student. So when a student receives a hotspot, no matter where they are, as long as they have cellular coverage, they can connect to that hotspot and access the internet, um, just like you and I can on our phones. Uh, in fact, some of us use our phones as hotspots when we travel for our computers. But that's the idea of a hotspot. The things that we ran into in the spring were we had limits on the, um, the amount of data that could be used on a, on a hotspot in a day. So we're removing those caps. And like I mentioned in the presentation, we're really excited by figuring out that some of our, the original hotspots we bought all worked on the Verizon network. But we know that there's areas in Santa Barbara where Verizon doesn't have great coverage. So we're being, we're doubling our efforts and making sure that we have hotspots that run on a multitude of networks. So we can look at maps of coverage areas and make sure that when we're adding a hotspot to a family, we know that there's good coverage in their area to support that hotspot.
So would I appreciate also?
Sorry, Dr. Reed, let me just add one more to your point. In speaking to the community that's asking to support us, an idea came to us about having high school students create videos, sort of like, uh, job aids or how-to videos for families, specifically to the point you're making around all the different ways that we log onto the platforms or how to get internet in your house or what a hotspot is and how do you use it? So we're also going to look into being really creative and creating some videos with the help of high school students and others, uh, by, in bilingual, into languages or as much as we need to, so that we can support families and parents on how to use that.
That's exciting. That's a great community service opportunity also, right, for students? But that sounds very exciting. And I also wanted to acknowledge what, um, Mr. Rickman stated earlier too, is that, um, the principals are being tasked really to reach out to the stu, the parents and the families who, um, there is concern that there has not been internet service. And so I guess I want to make sure that for those, um, parents in this community who have those challenges, that this is an opportunity to reach the, to reach out to the principal and share that experience as well, so that we can alleviate that as soon as possible to ensure that you have that coverage and internet access that you need. So, um, thank you, Mr. Rickman. It was, it was great to know and ha, and know that we as a district can really ensure that all of our students, when we say remote learning, that are actually going to have access to that and that we're going to work, extremely hard to ensure that continues to happen.
You know, I wanted to add that we're really excited by this challenge. Uh, the board knows that this is a, a project that has been close to my heart for a long time. Often, you know, you can never look, you, you have to take these opportunities, you have to take these instances as opportunities to make things happen for our family. And we're going to make sure that all of our families are connected, even if it means that Brian Rouse and I are walking door-to-door and, and knocking on the doors of families to make sure they're connected. Uh, that's our commitment, that we're going to get that done.
Well, I appreciate that. And I know that if you two working together, that, that will happen. I know, uh, for certainly Brian Rouse is, is our techie wizard of all time. I don't know what I would do with my laptop if I didn't have just Brian's support on a daily basis sometimes. But then I also just wanted to, and, and I will end my, my, my comments, but I was really excited also to talk to many principals who were, they were sharing the strong leadership of teachers stepping forward and emerging in this process that, that are, they're so, and also hearing from teachers. Um, and one particular, I won't call out her name, I don't want to embarrass her, but she ca, she expressed the incredible work and, and that she's doing in remote learning. And the transparency and go, wow, this is what you're doing in your classroom. There is such great work going on, we just don't know about it all. And certainly, um, I would look forward to hearing and learning more about what is transparent in these classrooms, because I think it's innovative and it's, it's exciting. There's been such a pall over remote learning from the experiences this past spring. And I know there has been challenges, but there are opportunities and positive wonderful things that are happening in the classroom. And so I wanted, Dr. Wagonick, if you could share a little bit more, how are teachers being supported to share these best practices? And how much time is being allowed to do a deeper dive into understanding the excellence that does exist in the district in remote learning?
Well, um, I hope you'll indulge me. I am going to punt this to my, um, very able colleague, Ms. Carrie, to, to answer your question.
So pre-COVID, we had some really good practices. A lot of our principals actually heavily favor practices of, of teachers modeling to other teachers, um, strategies and lesson designs that are engaging and rigorous. And so that's, that's a hallmark of the professional learning that happens regularly through staff meetings and PLCs. And of course, the spring was disruptive. But we did have some things I'd like to highlight. We, um, had teachers that were featured on a community webinar and highlighted, one that Marjorie Yavi facilitated, that, that shouted out different exemplars across school sites and grade spans. one that Marjorie Yavi facilitated, that shouted out different exemplars across school sites and grade spans. One of our teachers was featured in Reader's Digest and held her own webinars, just of her own accord, to train teachers. And I do know that principals, even in the spring, when they found those practices that were proving to be consistently engaging to students, a lot about what was happening in the spring was about engagement, that those practices were being highlighted through meetings of all staff. We also have examples of teachers who tasked either individual teachers or PLCs with measuring, quantitatively measuring student engagement. So when I use this type of lesson or strategy, this is the engagement that I get, and then making adjustments based on that. So it was real-time learning that was happening and being shared among colleagues and with principals' facilitation. We also, the same way we have a Learning Resources for Families website, we have a Learning Resources for Teachers website that is internal to our workforce. And so that site also represents a compilation of best practices, tips and tricks. One thing that we know, we know will be helpful is to generate our own videos and demonstrations of effective lesson design. But that's also something that's available to us in Linkspring. And so just to reinforce something I said earlier, there's a rich repository there of demonstration lessons, and our own teachers can upload content there and be helped in sharing what they do best, not just with each other, but with even a broader network of practicing professionals. So we've done a lot of that already in a new way in the spring, but we have these platforms and forums now for doing it more broadly than ever before.
Well, thank you. It sounds like some wonderful opportunities ahead, I think. And really, education is not going to be the same ever again. And we can take this as an opportunity to really make a difference with our academic scores and our literacy scores by really honing in on and shedding light on best practices that teachers are doing. So thank you. I really appreciate all the work that you're doing, this report. I just will put a plug, the idea of thinking outside the box in terms of, you know, outdoor learning. And when we do go back, there's, you know, an elementary that might be a more doable setting than perhaps, you know, as one principal said, having four or five groups learn science in, you know, Peabody Stadium. I mean, there's opportunities, but maybe not quite like that. But how we can use outdoor classrooms and use nature and use our environment to support learning, and also it supports social emotional health as well. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. Reed. Ms. Munoz, do you have questions or comments?
Yes, I have a comment. First of all, you know, thank you so much. I really appreciate the work of the board and, I'm sorry, the work of the cabinet and the superintendent as we, you know, prepare for return to school. It really has been helpful, the day in the life of the student, depending on the grade level, was very helpful in terms of a clearer and specific examples for parents and their students, you know, to understand, for children to look at, okay, so this is what I'm going to be doing when I go back to school. And also in terms of, you know, the two pandemics that we're dealing with, COVID and systemic racism. As, you know, a medical social worker, we are talking about like the risk levels for people of color, for our Black students, for our Latinx students. I noticed also that in terms of the type of going back to school, that Black students and their families favored 42%, favored hybrid learning, and 41% favored a fully remote. And I think we need to keep that in the forefront, keep, you know, keep that in the forefront. It's about all of our students and the safety that they have. I think that we need to be based on, you know, scientific and data-driven in terms of going back to school. And hopefully, I know that our county will be able to pull through. You know, we've done other things as a community when we've had challenges. And in the long run, I think this is going to favor everyone. Previously, I had had conversations with future leaders of America in terms of students wanting to be able to excel both with career or college. And look at what we're talking about. I mean, we're talking about having the students show the way, you know, and show that leadership. And also having learning centers, which I think were needed, you know, a year ago, two years ago. We were talking about that. And with, you know, with the support, with the hotspots, with the internet, with the technology, we're preparing these students for the future. I think that, you know, in the long run, the communication and collaboration as a community between all of us on the same page are really going to favor our students, our school staff and our teachers. So I, you know, it has my full support and I, you know, I'm just looking forward to what we can do. I know that our success, you know, we have is unlimited in terms of what we can do from here. It's amazing what we've done just in a couple months. So adelante, we will continue on this path.
Thanks, Ms. Munoz. Ms. Sims-Botin.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Maldonado and the cabinet. This was a very comprehensive presentation, had a lot in there and called to some questions that I wanted to just address. But first, I wanted to say that certainly, the success of our students has to be grounded, of all of our students has to be grounded in equity, right? Because then we're saying everybody has the opportunity. So we're creating that opportunity to access education. And it feels like if we're grounded in equity, it feels like a kaleidoscope. No matter which way you turn it, we're going to be successful. You have different pictures to be able to see it, but you're going to have that grounded in equity. And I think also, this is an opportunity that is pushing us forward. I know many of us wanted to shake up education. I don't know if we want to turn it upside down and pour it out altogether at one time. But I think this is an opportunity to, you know, carefully to move for where we really want to be. I think it's given those opportunities because it's creating conversations that perhaps we wouldn't have had otherwise. And so I want to appreciate the comments that came through on our, from our public with regards to that. And one of the things I also appreciated was the day in the life that you, you know, that you portrayed both our young kids in middle school and in high school. I do have a question. So we said that they would, some would bike to pick up their food, some would walk to pick up their food. So I'm wondering, you know, we have crossing guards normally during the school year. Is that something we're considering, safety, making sure they safely get to, you know, to pick up their lunch and then safely get back? If we can maybe address that in some way. And I also understand that all of our students have different needs. Some may not need that academic support because they can just kind of ride and they're just, okay, that's not their need. But I think it's important too, in what you mentioned, in terms of the social emotional needs. Some of our students need social emotional needs, even though they're highly academically successful. But they may have different pressures. So it's important to make sure we're looking at the whole child and what pressures they're under. May not necessarily be academic, but they could be social pressures to succeed. So what does this mean for, I'm trying to be a senior, trying to get to this school, and now I can't do this? So that's added pressure that is something really important that we're going to look at. And I see you were talking about how important it is to support all of our children. Certainly, the social emotional needs should not be grounded in how successful they are academically. I appreciate the fiscal accountability of Meg. Thank you. You know, it's probably a question I was going to ask in terms of those pieces. And so I would have two questions, something to think about. The expenditures that you laid out, how much of that is going to be part of the CARES dollars? If we were able to receive those? And how would that impact our reserve, our rainy day fund with regards to that? So that's pretty much it. I just want to appreciate what you're saying and what has been presented here. And I also think that we need to create, to keep the creativity and be innovative so that we're able to flash, we're just not, we're not just weighted to the three options that you presented today. But there's also the fourth option of looking at, thinking creatively outside the box to make sure that we're moving toward and responding to things that are coming to us on a daily basis, best practices as we talk to other districts and seeing what they're doing. The other piece I would say, and lastly, I would say with regards, the schools are such an anchor in the community. What we're doing impacts employers and workers. And it's also really feeding into how do we work as a community in terms of, you know, supporting our parents who need to stay at home? Is that an option? Not everybody has that option. So as part of their policies, so I know at the county level, we're looking at, what does it really mean to really work cohesively, you know, as a community to support the needs that are arising now, that we never really had that opportunity or thought we could change our policies to support the direction where we're going? So know that we're looking at too, how do we support our parents? And still, they're able to make a living and support their students. So I think all of us working together is really going to make us all be better prepared for the future. So I appreciate the conversations, I appreciate the things that have come forward. And it does need to be, it absolutely has to be grounded in equity. And it's not only just in our schools, but also in folks who are working in the community and what level they're working at. So equity is really a framework for all of this to be successful. So thank you again, and I look forward to continuing to, as this is an evolving situation. But it's certainly, I think it's grounded in your hard work and you're listening to all aspects and all comments that are coming in, and that's very evident in your presentation tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sims-Botin. Ms. Ford.
Oh, thanks so much. Cabinet and Ms. Maldonado, I am so excited about this plan. I know that you're planning to expand upon it and give us more details in the next 10 days or so. And I'll be very excited to see that too. I really appreciate the excitement and the enthusiasm that I sense from many of you. And I think that's just the way we have to approach this now. There's this famous saying, we probably all said it at different times, but it seems so perfect now, about flying the plane at the same time that you're building it. And that feels so much like what we're doing with this challenge that we're facing today. And I didn't get a chance to mention earlier, but I also was gratified by the dozens and dozens of letters that we received. Some were quite critical, and that still is ultimately helpful. But many others did two things that I thought were wonderful. One was they came up with some really creative, out-of-the-box ideas, and I love this. And I just hope that we listen to all of these voices because we would be better and distance learning would be better because they expressed such creativity. And then the other thing that so many letters expressed was determination and resolve and enthusiasm. And I think that's just how we have to approach it. I guess I feel compelled just to remind the board and also the public of one thing that I know for sure from so many years of working in schools. And that is that teachers love their students and they love their schools. And they have shown me over and over again that despite floods and fires and earthquakes, 9/11, deaths, terminal illnesses, the recession, and then a myriad of personal challenges, that they can be nimble and courageous and graceful. So I'm not worried. I know that they'll rise to this challenge. And they have started since Friday when we received the news from the governor. And I just think it's now, as Dr. Reed said, it's time for us to do our part. Wear masks, socially distance, and give the teachers what they need. So to that point, I have a couple questions. One is for Dr. Wagenek. Are you going to try to come up with some sort of a plan about how long you will stay? You will recommend that we stay on remote learning even after we're two weeks beyond the watch list? I ask this because I've been reading a lot about districts. And some districts are saying, hey, we're just doing distance learning for the rest of the year or for the whole semester, or for the first quarter, or we want to be able to turn around within, you know, three to five days. Have you been thinking about that? And will you, are you thinking, and maybe it's for Ms. Maldonado too, about setting some sort of guidelines about how long?
Well, yes, I'll respond and then I will turn it over to Ms. Maldonado. With all we've been, had a lot on our plan. But we did broach this topic because we have to. And so, you know, I think we did a really good job of, and it was hard for families and the community, and I know for the board yourself, to, we, some districts made their decision a month ago. And now they're having to reel it back. And I think, so I think we were smart in that way. And I think we have to take the same approach with this, is be ready, but not call it too soon. However, we still have to plan. I mean, that's the craziness of this virus and this whole experience. But, so we'll go slow, but have ongoing conversations about what that means and perhaps do some predicting moving forward about what that looks like. And then I'll, I'm sure Ms. Maldonado has some comments to make.
Thank you, Dr. Wagenek. Definitely would love to say to this board, we are going to be in remote learning till X date. But I wasn't hired with a crystal ball to tell you that. I know that this board really hired me to help, you know, lead some of your agendas on helping students. I would like to echo Fran's comments and also add that it would be helpful for us to collectively think about what is the right amount of time so that we can lower the anxiety for parents, for teachers and everyone else and be able to say, you know, we will do this for two months. I'm just throwing that number out. Continue continuously monitor that we're meeting the metrics and then make a thoughtful transition as possible all the way back to full classrooms. I think, as I met today with superintendents in the area, a lot of them are thinking that it makes sense for us to say to everybody, do it for the first semester. And if conditions were to radically change, we can reel that decision back. But at least parents and everybody can plan that this first semester will be a remote semester. And then plan for what to do in January. Of course, there's a lot of conversations about vaccines, about, you know, I also care deeply about ensuring that we can test our teachers and have rapid results. That's a big issue that we want to think about so that, you know, everybody feels safe in this transition. So those are my comments. That's how I'm thinking about it. And that's what some of my colleagues around our areas have also said.
Perfect. That really helps me. And I think it will help any of the public that is watching or watches the tape of this. The other thing I wanted to ask Dr. Wagenek is, you mentioned that the health officials, public health officials said, you know, are you kidding me? Nobody's ready now to get the waiver for elementary schools. But did you have any sense for what might be a condition under which an elementary school could receive a waiver?
Well, you know, with this having come out in, you know, just on Friday, our own local public health, we were in a meeting with them today. They're still waiting to get word on the waiver process from California Department of Health, really trying to wrap their minds around what that would look like and where. So I think we're going to know more in a couple of weeks. And so obviously, we'll be keeping the board up to date on that. But, you know, we did ask if the data could be more disaggregated by local areas to get an idea. And the county's just not able to do that at this time because of how the whole system is set up for reporting. But I also have to think they know more than we do in terms of infection rates and so forth as well. So we will just continue to inquire with them regularly and see where we go. And we'll keep the board posted.
That's perfect. I totally agree. And we did receive a lot of letters asking us to just consider ourselves separate from North County. And so it will be very helpful to keep reiterating that the way the state is And so it will be very helpful to keep reiterating that the way the state has set it up is county by county, not dividing up counties. And then the other, just the other comment I have, which is really just a desperate request is that I think that teachers deserve more than six hours of training. So I hope you find a way to make that possible for them.
We will definitely provide opportunities that are more than six hours to teachers. So that they can take advantage of all the learning possible before they come back.
Thanks.
I might just piggyback and say that part of the, the six hours is the minimum required, but we actually plan to start that next week. So that teachers who are chomping at the bit, and we know they are, and we want to support them with that, can do much more than that as they see fit in a personalized fashion. So those minimum six hours are really the portal to additional personalization, personalized professional learning.
Great, thanks.
Great. Well, thank you, Ms. Ford. Thanks to the team. I'm going to wrap it up here and I just want to make a few points with a couple of questions about the budget and then lead us into a motion about that budget. I just want to appreciate the presentation that you started with data. Data needs to drive this. And in a sense, I wish that this meeting of 300 people plus and last week's meeting of 900 people could really be a megaphone to this entire community that we need to turn this around to get our kids back in school. That's the headline. That's the, to me. And I, looking back at that slide that was included at the top of this presentation, we had this in May. We had this two months ago. Our numbers were way down. We had, just to review at the slide, we had less than about 20 new cases. Uh, and now we're at a whole different scenario. So not to sort of change the optimistic spirit here, but really make the point that we're in this situation because our community, our county, all of us together collectively haven't done what we need to do to make, to curb this virus. And if, you know, our city and county leaders could enforce masks, I think that would go a long way to getting us there. If there's other actions that anyone has to do it, we all have a, a part of this. So I just want to remind us why, why we're in this situation and why we're all working so hard to give as parents, as teachers, as staff, as community members, as, as all the folks that care. And I go back to the commonality here. We all want, no matter where we are in this spectrum of open or closed or hybrid, or how we answer that survey. We all prefer for our kids to be safely back in school. And so again, this needs to be a loud collective megaphone for our county to be like other parts of the country, even other parts of the state that could open safely. Back in May, when we started these conversations and this PowerPoint was, many of the slides were part of this, that PowerPoint back there. We would be in a whole different scenario now. We would be out in a whole different scenario. So that's just my point to keep the data in mind and to continue as a parent to say to whoever is in your orbit, whether it's an elected official or a business owner or your kid. We all got it. We're all in this together. So my second point I want to make is really to talk about, I was really pleased to see on the education, again, as a parent, to see how disparate it was in the spring. And I get it is emergency, but we really need an emphasis on the uniformity of the platform while maintaining flexibility. And I think that's that, that natural beautiful tension in teaching and in so many things. I've heard from so many teachers, uh, like Ms. Carrie just said, who are chomping at the bit to get, to get more training, to do better at this. They recognize that, that April and May weren't ideal and they want. So thank you for laying out the expectations and keeping those front and centers. And I, just a request to keep us updated on how those expectations are being received by the teachers and making sure that parents, and we'll do it because we get the letters, have a place to go if they're not experiencing that level of quality that we know and we're committed to delivering this, this time around in this remote learning situation. Uh, and I, now I have a couple of budget questions. And thank you, Ms. Jatae, for laying it out so clearly. I think it's really helpful. Uh, I, I know this is the action and the way that this agenda item was presented. We're going to be taking action here. I think it's really important to get moving on some of the pieces related to hybrid, to fully opening. So I'm just going to bring it up. I bring it up a lot, but I'm such a fan of the idea of tents and outdoor spaces. I mean, just, I can speak personally. It's been such a relief the last few weeks, potentially even a month, to have more science about how this virus is spread and to feel better about being in an outdoor situation safely, you know, 12 feet from a, you know, my brother who, you know, I haven't been able to hold his son yet. And so if we can just learn from the epidemiology just of how this, this virus is spread and really encourage outdoor learning, not just when we go back for the few months, but this is, this is a new way of thinking. This is a new way of understanding a virus, a pandemic that we haven't had in a hundred years. This isn't going to go away at the flip of a switch, January 1st, or when we get a vaccine. It's going to take time for that vaccine. You know, flu season's going to happen. It's going to, people are going to think it's COVID. So not to mention all of the other benefits of outdoor education, just kids being outside. I see it in, with my own child, the, the freedom that comes with that. So I'm in favor of moving forward. I was pleased to see that it just, that Mr. Vizalini has also already scoped out on each campus where tents could be to facilitate outdoor learning. And by tents, I just want to be clear, not, not fully enclosed tents, but just basically shade spaces. So that there's pure ventilation. And I want to get going on that. And any ideas, I think it would be so important for, for kids and families, as they're not in those schools, to see these types of steps being taken on campus as a, as a visual reminder that, that plans are underway to welcome them back with open arms. So I'm in favor of the tents. You can see, I'm in favor of moving forward and spending our reserves the things that we know we're going to need have soon and be able to pivot as soon as possible to hybrid model or to a fully open model once our community gets our, gets the numbers down. So as we get to the budget numbers or requests, I just want to, to be as proactive. At least I can speak as for one board member that, um, I want us to start spending money in order to make that safety happen. So that when we, when, when numbers do go down, there isn't a delay, a huge gap to catch up. Because we're not ready with the infrastructure. And I recognize it's a huge, I'm asking, it's a huge lift because we're also, also making sure that remote learning is, is going well. So Mr. Tay, as you're analyzing, uh, the budget and what could come first, if we can just keep that in mind and, and know that at least one board member supports, um, putting in things right now that we might not even necessarily, if things don't go as we use until January, hopefully sooner. So that's my, that's my request. And lastly, I'm just going to end, um, with the parent engagement. I really appreciate it. I think her name is Carolyn Harrah, who spoke, uh, this newly formed group of parents. And as I mentioned in my opening comments about sort of a comparison to World War II, this is a time when everyone is pitching in. We see it in the emails. We see it in the phone calls that we're getting. And I'm so pleased that, that Kami Barnwell and, and Ms. Maldonado are work, are working on a wish list. Because I just know my friends who are parents, we're all looking to help in very tangible ways beyond just writing emails, even though that's important to stay in touch. But really, you know, either donating money to the right source, donating equipment that we, that might be needing, donating, you know, maybe people have event, have tents, maybe people have connections to events, uh, company that wear these types of things. So we'll be formulating with the, with Kami Barnwell on point, a wish list that this group of parents and other nonprofits who've been part of these conversations can really utilize so that we can give tangible ways in which we can all express our anxiety and our determination to get our kids back in the schools where we know is the best education for them. So I just want to thank again, all the parents. I sort of, I will, I'll leave that with a request to motion. Because I actually really didn't have any questions for the staff. And I see that Ms. Ford might have one, but I think that we're in the mood and, or I'm in the mode and the mood to move forward on, in getting us to there. We don't have another board meeting for another three weeks. So this really is a crunch time, getting ready to prepare for remote learning. Making sure you all, as the team that's making these budgetary decisions, planning decisions, have the resources that you need. So thank you for listening to me. And with that, I think that Ms. Ford has either a question or a potential for a motion.
Well, I totally agree that not only do we need to purchase all these things, I love the ideas of tents. I know a lot has already been purchased. We were given that information and just there's so many other things that are on the table. And so I really support this motion and I'd like to make it. So I took a note, I hope it makes sense. Approved funding expenditures related to COVID-19 and distance learning to be made without board approval as allowed under Board Policy 3312 and ED Code 17604 with follow-up reports at the following board meetings. Second.
Ms. Sims-Monten, do you have a question? You're muted.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Yeah, I just had a question. And is there an up to amount that we would be as part of the code? Ms. Jatae?
What's the advice on that, Mr. Tay?
So the way the board policy is written, that if there's a facility emergency or a, um, safety issue, that the board can, um, ratify any kind of expenditure. So this is one of those situations. That's, this is the bucket I would put that in. And you're delegating the authority for Ms. Maldonado to make those decisions.
Okay. And I would just add on to Ms. Ford's comment in terms, so we'll be getting regular reports with regards to that. So we can know where we are, if there's other things we need to do beyond that. So I know it's been motioned in second, I'm ready to approve. But I just want to add that.
If I can jump in and clarify that it's not as though this spending will happen without any transparency or accountability. It's just we don't have to wait, they don't have to wait for three weeks for the next scheduled board meeting in order to proceed with purchases.
Yeah, I got that. I just wanted to make sure that for the public that it's just not, even though they don't have to come back, but there is some spending.
Yeah. And I think I
Ratify. You're on mute.
What's that, Mr. Tay?
I, I said that this will all be ratified, so you will see every expenditure.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thanks for clarifying. Ms. Maldonado, did you, did I see you? Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a, uh, thank you, a motion on the table by Ms. Ford, a second by, I believe it was Dr. Reed, if I'm, my memory serves. And I, uh, I'm ready to call, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks to everybody. That leaves us and to our, the public, members of the public for hanging with us on this conversation. And we'll continue to be in touch with all of you. And this now moves us to the rest of the action agenda. Let me find my agenda here quickly. And then we'll be taking a quick break after we move through a bunch of quick items here. Items E2 through 10. So with that, Dr. Reed, do we have a motion for item E2, which is board action on petition?
Yes, I'm thrilled and proud to list these seven motions for readmission today. So in the case of 2018-19-37, I move to make the motion of student reentry from full expulsion for two semesters ending in June 2020.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the case of 2019-20-03, I move to make the motion of student reentry from suspended expulsion for two semesters ending on June 2020.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the case of 2019-20-10, I move to make the motion of student reentry from full expulsion for two semesters ending on June 2020.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the case of 2019-20-17, I move to make the motion of student reentry from suspended expulsion for two semesters ended on June 2020.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the case of 2019-20-18, I move to make the motion of student reentry from suspended expulsion for two semesters ending on June 2020.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the case of 2019-20-21, I move to make the motion of student reentry from full expulsion for one semester ending in June 2020.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And in the case of 2019-20-29, I move to make the motion of student reentry from full expulsion for two semesters ended on June 2020.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. And for those who might be wondering, we just admitted seven students who had been expelled and are now back in school. Item E9, approval of agreement between Santa Barbara Unified School District and Family Service Agency. Dr. Wagenek.
You, board, I bring to you, um, an agreement between Santa Barbara High School and the Family Service Agency for school-based counseling services. Santa Barbara High School, uh, through its foundation, foundation has given them money to hire an extra therapist for the 2020, 2021 school year. Uh, are there any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Sims-Monten?
Dr. Wagenek, is this adding on to the current agreement? Is this an add-on to this, an amendment to that one or is this new?
Um, this is not part, I mean, basically it's hiring one more therapist with foundation dollars. And this therapist will be, um, will be acting in the same manner as the other therapists who are already at Santa Barbara High. So while it's not part of our, specifically our MOU with, um, Family Service Agency, it will serve the same purpose.
Okay, right. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, I need a motion. Thank you, Dr. Wagenek.
I move approval.
Thank you, Ms. Sims-Monten. I will second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item E10, approval of agreement. This is another Dr. Wagenek, approval of agreement between Santa Barbara Unified School District and Family Agents, Service Agency.
Yes. So we're bringing to the board, um, a contract for mental health therapist services. This is specifically an FSA therapist to work with students in the Ketsal, Ketsal program. Which of course are students who are on expulsion or involuntary transfer because of behavior. So are there any questions?
Ms. Menyess.
Uh, no, I, you know, I fully support the need for a therapist at Ketsal to help ensure the students are successful, you know, with the, and meet their mental health needs.
Thank you.
Ms. Sims-Monten?
Uh, thank you. I, I fully support it as well. So it also notes that it's a pilot implementation. So can you expand on to that a little bit more, Dr. Wagenek?
Uh, yes, if I could see, I'm sorry, but I cannot see the screen fully.
Okay.
So, but, um, to clarify, Ketsal has had a therapist through our school-based mental health services program. And what this is going to do is this therapist will be running, uh, different types of groups and working in a slightly different capacity, uh, than our other FSA therapists across the district. Specifically doing work, um, that is appropriate for the students at Ketsal.
Is this the same person that's maybe splitting time between Ketsal and then just the one we just approved?
Uh, no, the one you just approved was Santa Barbara High. This is to, uh, previously, um, all of alternative ed had one therapist that split the time between the campuses. What this will do is have someone at Ketsal the bulk of the time that the students are in school in order to provide services. that the students are in school in order to provide services. And of course, this was, this was created and underway prior to the COVID shutdown.
Yeah.
But yes.
Thank you. I think it's important to have as much time at each of the campuses as we can, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? On this contract? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion.
I move approval.
Thank you, Ms. Sims-Mothen. Dr. Reed, I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, I am mending. I've been told that the remaining item is just about five minutes. So we're not going to take a break. We're going to power on through. So thank you so much. Ms. Carey, this item is yours. It's item F1, Update Around Adoption of FOS Science and Designated English Language. We do have one public speaker for this, I believe, Mr. Heo, if that person is still with us.
That is correct. We do have one public comment, Roseanne Crawford. Roseanne, can you hear us?
Hi there, here I am. Thank you. I'm very glad to see this meat and potatoes with these instructional materials. This is a wonderful program. I've reviewed it in depth. And this collaborative model is good for all students in improving reading and writing. Thank you for your diligence. Love it. Want to see more of this type of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment on this item.
Well, thank you. Ms. Carey?
Without minimizing the importance and the excitement of having arrived at this moment, I will expedite the timing by turning it directly over to Maria Laris Horton and Sierra Lockridge.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. I'm going to have my amazing colleague, Ms. Lockridge, start us off. And thank you, Brian, for pulling up the slide deck.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Sean. FOS Science, we are so excited to bring this to you for an update. We will be seeking board approval of it next board meeting. For those of you who don't know what FOS Science is, it stands for Full Option Science Systems. And it is a hands-on, engaging, dynamic way to teach science. Having been an elementary principal, I can attest to the joy that it brings, the curiosity and the writing and the drawing and the labeling and the just critical thinking that we want students to engage in. FOS is also California Board adopted. So we are in very good standing with bringing this to you for your consideration. Brian, you can go to the next slide. Um, I want to thank the Instructional Council. We have an Instructional Council in elementary and secondary, and these are elected teachers that represent their peers and talk to us about all kinds of things regarding curriculum and instruction. They were very thoughtful in allowing us to bring this to consideration. FOS did not come out of the blue. We started using it in about 2013 as a partnership with Stanford University and Bayside Science. We've invested heavily in kits for teachers as well as professional development. And it's something that you will see us committed to again at the start of this year. Moreover, not only did the Instructional Council get feedback from their sites, Dr. Ramirez and I held two listening sessions for staff via Zoom, as everything is, for people to come in and have questions. And at the end of this presentation, Ms. Laris Horton will be telling parents how else they can view these materials. So this is a adoption we feel very confident bringing forward with a long history and a lot of teacher commitment and investment. And I want to shout out also our NGSS science team. These are teacher leaders in primary, meaning K through 3 and 4 through 6, representatives from each school site. They have had wonderful facilitation of unpacking all that it means to be a scientist and really to how you can have those collaborative conversations. That is so important for English language development. And that's kind of part of our master plan that we're presenting here tonight. And I want to thank our science consultant, Holly Gill, and as well as our ELD Tosa, Hortensia Corral, when she was in that role, and our literacy coaches for really digging in and looking at the framework for English language development, looking at FOS and making that connection. For English language development, the framework from the state says that content, for really to understand how language works, it needs to come to and from content. And that's what we're going to be showing you tonight. So next slide, Brian. So how does this program prepare students? It prepares them to think about the natural world behind them. It has hands-on learning activities, and it's very, very engaging. I still remember very fondly seeing kids sort and sift pebbles and rocks and really the language that came out of that, from being able to classify and draw and label. It was really, really powerful as well as exciting. And not to worry, we will figure out ways to do that remotely that also capture that curiosity for all students. Next slide. FOS Designated English Language Development. This is something that we did as a district in partnership with FOS and Bayside. We brought in scholars in designated ELD and FOS curriculum writers as well as our own staff. And we committed lots of hours, lots of thought to unpacking what does it mean to empower our emergent multilingual students so that they're prepared to really engage in the rich content that we know science provides so that they can have shared experiences and develop even richer vocabulary and and make observations about the world around them. This started off in the beginning of the year and it worked all the way through June to have these lessons up and available for public comment and viewing. And we're very excited about this partnership. It's enriched our understanding of science as well as how English language development works. And we look forward to partnering with FOS and Bayside in the future. Next slide. So this is the public review. We want you to know, we're bringing this to the board tonight just to make sure that everyone has access to comment. The next webinars are July 22nd, July 29th, and August 5th. And I'm going to turn it over to Maria Laris Horton right now, and she can tell you more about what you can expect in those public comment sessions.
Thanks, Sierra. So here is our public review timeline, and we're excited to announce that tomorrow we already have 22 participants ready to join a webinar with us so that we can go into a review of our curriculum with with more depth. We've, so we have three of those scheduled, and folks are welcome to email us if they would like to come in and review the curriculum themselves in a safe manner. We will bring this to recommendation for this board on Tuesday, August 11th. And in between, we happy to 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 see some of you in any one of our webinars. With that being said, that's all I have to share, and we are open for any questions.
Thank you. And I do want to acknowledge that we could have spent a lot more time. A lot of things that would ordinarily get much more attention in board meetings have been not. So thank you for understanding, and I appreciate the succinctness. Any questions or comments from the board? Dr. Reed?
I just wanted to say that, to reiterate what you said, Ms. Capps, and also a comment I made about being able to get outside into the natural world and and that that is where we need to go. I totally in agreement as well with place-based education and nature. And so this program to connect to the natural world, there's going to be so many opportunities, maybe with these shades that we're thinking about setting up. But also, maybe there's, this will get the students outside in their, in their, you know, outside in their backyard. There's going to be, you know, connections to just moving out of their their rooms into the nature world. So I, it sounds like an exciting opportunity with this active engagement, and I look forward to reviewing the curricula. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Let's see, I can't, any other comments or questions?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Okay, Ms. Sims-Mothen?
Hi, I was just thinking in lining with first five, you know, out there, outdoor classrooms are really critical in our early care and education. So as we continue to to align with the TK and K through 12, this is really good. So I definitely want to be able to maybe sit in on and review some of the material so as we make better alignment with that going forward. So thank you.
Certainly. Okay. I think that we are, well, this is just a report, which means that you've you've spent time with the board and also in public talking about this new curriculum, and then it comes back for approval, I believe, on consent. Is that the idea? Or potentially, or action, we can discuss that later, but thank you for the report. Okay, thanks to the team. So now, moving forward, I do believe we have one more public speaker on our, well, we have item H, which is coming events. We talked about a few related to this curricula and future plans for remote learning. So item I is future agenda items, and we do have a public speaker on this item. Ms. Trujillo?
Yes, President Capps, we have Roseanne Crawford. Roseanne, can you hear us?
Thank you, yes. Superintendent Maldonado, I'm looking forward to you leading this district. Your personal story as being an English learner through complete immersion, I'm sure has fed your passion for education and honed your skills in working with this population. I questioned that, I questioned that this board voted on April 28th in deep COVID on a Zoom meeting to adopt an ideological concept created by Meta. The board even went ahead and designated the campus McKinley School starting this fall with this overreaching plan that eventually will be implemented in all schools. This process was not inclusive of the public, done on the heels of an outgoing superintendent. No one is a bigger supporter of the concept of bilingual education than I. I'm bilingual myself, and I have a foot in both cultures. Sadly, back years ago, when bilingual was offered as a 50-50 model that failed, I took my son out of it because he fell so far behind in English, a shocking 15th percentile, and learned very little Spanish. I'd listened to the YouTube for the April 28th meeting as I couldn't find any articles or posts online about this being developed or considered. The Meta presenters referenced there were five formal meetings with stakeholders and that if the Meta ideology was adapted, it would be presented to the public. And I'm not sure what that would look like because of COVID.
I'm.
It was brought back on an agenda item for possible discussion to be rescinded as a lack of public participation violating possibly the Brown Act. Thank you.
Thank you. President Capps, that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. So that leads us to the end of our meeting and record speed here at 10:21. I just want to thank all the members of the public, keep the good ideas and energy coming our way. And to, again, to the staff, to Mr. Heo for managing public comment. It's no easy task on Zoom and to the board. So with that, I will announce that our next board meeting is August 11th, just six days, just six days before school starts. And we'll be in touch between now and then, and I want to thank everybody and ask for adjournment. So with that, our last action of the of the night would be to adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned. That's the visual gavel there, and thanks to everyone. Have a good night. Have a good rest of the evening. Bye-bye.